Thank you. Will we convene the council meeting?
I'm going to call, uh, Councilmember Beard.
Here.
Councilmember Burie.
Here.
Councilmember Fawn.
Here.
Mayor Protem Jones. Mayor Wynn.
Yes. I'd like to ask our Assistant City Manager, Mr. Okuriki, to give us the invocation. Then after that, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Okay, please prepare yourself according to your faith. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to serve the people of our city. We appreciate the ability to be involved in this useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Help us to act with good character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Give us a spirit of service and guide our city council to be the leaders our community need. Amen.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
See, we have some presentations tonight.
Sorry. We have two new spotlights that Assistant City Manager Okuriki will be presenting.
Thank you, City Clerk. Tonight, the first spotlight, the Gadding Grove City Council is proud to shine the community spotlight on two special individuals who have enhanced the City of Gadding Grove community with their time, generosity, and spirit of service. They are the Senior Volunteer Man and Woman of the Year, officially known as 2015 Strawberry Ball King and Queen. Would has late Sukie Sukiyama and Yolanda Montano please come forward. Sukie was born in Honolulu, Hawaii in the 1960s. He moved to California and has been an active resident of Gadding Grove for over thirty years. Sukie joined the Police Department's Volunteers in Policing Program, also known as VIP, as part of the inaugural group in 1994, and is now one of only two remaining original volunteers. Sukie has used his talent and experience to volunteer for a number of different VIP assignments, including the Community Emergency Response Team, Event Parking and Crowd Control, City Park and Resort Area Patrol, Vacation Chicks, and the Volunteers in Policing Emergency Response Team. Yolanda, born in Arizona, she was raised by her grandmother in Los Angeles. At the age of fifteen, she acquired her very first job at Clifton's Cafe, and in the following years, she worked a multitude of jobs in the food service industry. Ten years ago, Yolanda moved to Gadding Grove and decided to walk into the local senior center. Not long after stepping foot in the senior center, she found herself volunteering in the kitchen. Yolanda was also given the opportunity to update the senior center leader board, to promote daily activities, and has diligently done so ever since she came aboard. She is also a member of the American Legion and the X Lodge. Yolanda's vibrant spirit has made her a real asset to the senior center. The City of Gadding Grove thanks both of you, has late Sukie Sukiyama and Yolanda Montano, for your exceptional service to the city and community of Gadding Grove. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present Sukie and Yolanda with a gift of appreciation and recognition for their outstanding volunteer work in the city. The city is proud to recognize them as the Senior Volunteer Man and Woman of the Year and the 2015 Strawberry Ball King and Queen. Thank you.
It was so fun dancing with Yolanda.
Sukie!
It was a lot of fun.
We need you to...
Okay, on the count of three. One, two, three, and one more. Okay.
All right. Yeah. Okay, we have another one.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do. We have our 2015 Youth of the Year Award recipients. Jessica Dush, Ashley Gonzalez, and I understand Lionel Mercado is not here, but his father is here.
Okay, good.
The Gadding Grove City Council is pleased to recognize three of Gadding Grove's best and brightest, who have earned the distinguished Youth of the Year Award for 2015 from the Boys and Girls Club of Gadding Grove. Since 1947, the Boys and Girls Club of America have recognized members of their outstanding service to the club, the community, and their academic success. This year's Boys and Girls Club of Gadding Grove's 2015 Youth of the Year recipients are Jessica Dush, Ashley Gonzalez, and Lionel Mercado. Will the three of you please, and then his dad, come forward? Ashley?
Yeah, go ahead.
And Jessica, is here? All right, good. Jessica attends the Stanford branch and is seven-year member of the club. This sis grad's favorite club activity is dodgeball because she enjoys winning. Jessica knows the importance of recycling as well, so every Thursday at her school, she picks up teachers' recyclables. She also performed this eight-friendly service at the Stanford branch, ensuring that it stays clean always. Ashley Gonzalez goes to the Fitz Intermediate Branch and is a five-year member at the club. When asked how the club helped her succeed, she said, and I quote, "The staff and the club helped me realize my own potential, even when I didn't believe in myself. I gained hope and learned how to stay optimistic through hard times." In the future, Ashley hopes to become a criminologist. Lionel Mercado participates at the Santiago High School branch and a dedicated eight-year member. As a way to improve his community, he recently volunteered in a 5K fundraiser benefiting a local nonprofit organization. His volunteer efforts led Lionel to realize how he can help improve his community. In the future, Lionel hopes to major in computer engineering at San Francisco State University. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present each of these outstanding local youth with a gift in appreciation and recognition of their influential roles to their Boys and Girls Club. Congratulations.
I don't think Ashley showed up.
Okay, ready? Very good.
Thank you.
We have our closed session report. City Attorney?
Uh, yes. Between 5:30 and 6:30, the city council was in closed session with regard to labor negotiations, and there was no reportable action as a result of that closed session.
Thank you. This time, I'll recess the council meeting and convene the Housing Authority meeting.
Commissioner Bepley?
Present.
Commissioner Burie?
Here.
Commissioner Jones? Commissioner O'Connor? Commissioner Fawn?
Here.
Vice Chair Beard?
Here.
Chair Wynn.
Present. All right. Are any of these oral communication cards for the Housing Authority, Mr. Roder? Okay, great, thank you. We have some consent items?
Yes. Items 5A and 5B can be acted on simultaneously unless someone wants to pull an item for discussion.
Thank you. Will entertain a motion? I'll move to approve.
Second it.
Please vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
All right. And it looks like we have a public hearing tonight?
Yes, we have a public hearing on the adoption of the Housing Authority budget, and King's Leo Okuriki is here to give that report.
Thank you.
Kathy, can you talk this out?
Yeah. Kathy? I was wrong, Danny Wynn's going to go first.
Good evening, gentlemen, commissioners. The Section 8 Housing Assistance Program is federally funded through the Department of Housing and Urban Development to assist very low-income families, seniors, and disabled persons in payment of rent on the privately-owned rental units. The Gadding Grove Housing Authority subsidized over 2,300 families and administers an additional 300 families from incoming portabilities. Incoming portabilities are participants from other housing authorities in other jurisdictions who moved into Gadding Grove. An administrative fee is paid to the Gadding Grove Housing Authority to administer these families. Our Section 8 rental units are inspected before admission and annually or biannually to ensure they are decent, safe, and sanitary. Each year, Housing Authority staff inspects approximately 3,700 rental units. We also administer the Family Self-Sufficiency Program. This program is for current Section 8 participants and is designed to encourage tenant participation in education and career development. In addition, the Housing Authority has assets from the former Gadding Grove agency. These assets include land purchased from housing set-aside funds, several homes in the civic center area, which are being rented to low- and moderate-income households, and several affordable housing agreements. The rentals and the affordable housing agreements generate a small amount of revenue, which is used for the maintenance and upkeep of those homes and for the operational cost of administering the assets. That concludes my report. I will now turn over to Mr. Okuriki to provide additional information.
Okay, in terms of numbers, the Housing Authority receives housing allocation from HUD. For next year, we're expecting $31.6 million housing allocation from HUD. And that money will be spent about $30.98 million on the voucher program that I just outlined. Family Sufficiency Program will take approximately $114,000, and city administration will be close to $484,000 for a total expenditure that actually matches the total resources of $31.76 million. So essentially, housing is money in, money out. We spend all the money that is allocated to us from HUD to run the program, and in our estimation at this point, it is a balanced budget that we're proposing to you to adopt tonight. And that concludes my report. If you have any questions, we can answer.
Thank you. Are there any questions, commissioners? Okay, at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. Do we have any cards for the public hearing?
No, we don't.
Seeing and hearing no members wanting to speak on this during the public hearing, I'm going to close the public hearing. Okay, so at this time, entertain a motion. Move to approve. Second. Any further discussion? No? Please vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council and authority, at this point, we'd like to recommend that the council hold Item 7 in abeyance for a moment and consider moving to Items 7B, 7B1, and 7B2, as those all involve the Housing Authority and its budget and financial affairs. We felt it might, for purposes of continuity, best to take those matters up and then come back to the matter of the Housing Authority action.
Okay. Let's move to 7B.
Sorry. Susan Emery will be here. We'll be providing the report for the 2014-15 budget.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, and members of the Housing Authority. The items before you are resolutions which authorize the transfer of funds from the City General Fund to the Housing Authority to supplement administrative costs for the Section 8 program. The Gadding Grove Housing Authority is a long-established federally-funded program in this city with the primary goal of providing affordable housing for very low and low-income residents. Throughout the past few decades, the Authority has provided tens of thousands of families with decent, safe, and affordable housing that would otherwise be unavailable. The Housing Authority has been the city's primary source of affordable housing, which has been administered successfully and effectively. Our Authority maintains a high performance rating from HUD based upon annual audits. We maintain a lease-up rate, which is a strong indicator of effectiveness, of 98% to 100%. Nationwide, the lease-up rate averages 92%. For the past few years, primarily since the recession, HUD has reduced the administrative fees provided to the city for the operation of the program. In an ideal situation, the proportion of administrative fees and vouchers provided by HUD would be in balance. Although the number of vouchers has been constant, the fees to administer the program have declined. For the past two fiscal years in particular, fees paid to the city by HUD average 70% to 80% of the amount for which we are eligible. The gap in funding from HUD has been offset by funds from the city's general fund. The proposal before you is a resolution, or two resolutions, to cover gaps in funding for the current fiscal year by the general fund in an amount of up to $250,000. Thus, staff recommends the following actions. The first, the city council authorized a supplemental budget transfer from the general fund and authorized the finance director to transfer up to $250,000 to the Housing Authority for fiscal year 1415 for administrative costs. Second, the Housing Authority accepts the supplemental transfer from the general fund and authorizes the finance officer to accept the transfer of $250,000 from the general fund to the Housing Authority. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer your questions.
So do you perceive this being an ongoing problem in the near future as well?
Well, it's the federal government, and it's a bit hard to predict. One of the things we're trying to do is to reduce our administrative costs. We have five positions that you'll see in the budget that have been defunded. So even though the vouchers, the number of vouchers, is constant, we're reducing the number of staff we have to administer the program to help with the reduction in the administrative fees. So it puts an increasing burden on the staff to administer all those vouchers. It's hard to tell from the federal government what we're going to get from year to year. It seems particularly related to the recession, and hopefully, if the economy is continuing to improve, we'll get increasing amounts from HUD.
And as far as the trends, have we been receiving or supplementing more, or the same, or less, ever since we had to start supplementing?
Danny can jump on this as well, but I believe right after or during the recession was the highest amount, and then it's been decreasing, but not up to an amount that's completely making the city whole.
Thank you.
It's a positive trend for the city, but not quite 100%.
Thank you.
Has we asked our representative, like, you know, U.S. Congressman Alan Loenthal and Loretta Sanchez to help with this issue, and have they been helping us?
We do have a close relationship with Loretta Sanchez's office, and we communicate with her staff often. We are also members of NARO and like a large national housing authority, housing advocate. And we're also, the smaller group is, we also belong to another group, which is Southern California Housing Authorities. And we do have people, send people to Washington or to Sacramento to speak on our behalf, you know, so that we can have a unified voice. And so we do that often. We take surveys, we talk to each other, we constantly communicate to see if we can resolve the problem.
And what answer did we receive from HUD or from the federal state agency?
Unfortunately, the past few years, we have heard that housing is not a priority with Congress right now. And so since the sequester, we were hit very hard with the sequester. But since then, you know, basically, funding has been really unpredictable and much lower than what we have hoped for.
Not that it would make any difference, but it's our job, so I would like the staff to put together some talking points for us, so that when we meet with the federal and state representatives, at least we can present them and remind them that they still need to work on this for us.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we can certainly do that. Prepare those points for members of the council and authority and certainly communicate that to our congressional representatives. I think along with dealing with the financial shortfall, we would also accept some regulatory relief. I think it's a combination of those. The increasing demand for enforcement of new regulations and then a reduction in the cost to enforce those. So either end of that would help us.
Okay, any further questions or discussion on 7B? And this is going to be acted on, actually, 7B2, since we haven't convened the city council with the Housing Authority yet.
Yeah, there's a motion for the city council and a motion for the Housing Authority?
Okay, in that case, I'm going to convene the city council with the Housing Authority now. Is there a motion for those items? I'll move to approve on both.
Let's take them each.
Which one would you prefer first?
City first.
Okay. I'll make the motion, move to approve on the city council side.
Second it.
Please vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
That should only be four yes votes.
Oh, city council. I apologize. Motion received four yes votes.
And I'll make a motion to move on the housing side. Thank you. Is there a second?
I second it.
Please vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, shall we go back to 7A?
It's me, I'm sorry. This item is also a joint matter for the Gadding Grove Housing City Council regarding affordable housing project, and Allison Mills is here to provide that report.
Good evening, council members and commissioners. Tonight, you will be asked to take several actions that are related to the United Methodist Church Senior and Multi-Family Apartment Project. Acting as the city council, you will be asked to adopt a resolution approving a cooperation agreement between the city and the Housing Authority, and to approve the home funds commitment and agreement for the United Methodist Church Senior and Multi-Family Apartment Project. And then acting as the Housing Authority, you will be asked to adopt a resolution approving a cooperation agreement between the city and Housing Authority, and approve a home funds commitment agreement among the city, the authority, and Gadding Grove Housing Partners, the developer for the United Methodist Church Senior and Multi-Family Apartment Project. Celeste Brady from the law firm of Stradling, Yoka, Carlson, and Roth will provide a staff report, and along with representatives from the Gadding Grove Housing Partners and myself, we will be available to answer any questions that you may have.
Good evening, Mayor, Chairman of the Housing Authority and the City Council, Celeste Brady, Special Counsel to both entities. You may remember, back in March of this year, you considered and took action to approve a preliminary award letter that provided a commitment of both home program funds of the Housing Authority and the city, as well as some housing successor monies. Your Housing Authority is the housing successor post dissolution of your redevelopment agency, and as well as the commitment to defer the development agreement fees for this project. We have taken those extra months between March and now for Jamboree Housing Corporation, which is the parent organization of the developer entity, to make application to the California Tax Credit Allocation Committee for an award of 4% tax credits, to apply to the California Debt Limit Allocation Committee for an award of $12 million of housing bond funds, to coordinate with the California Municipal Financing Authority, and you held a TEFRA hearing a while back, to authorize the issuance of those bonds by that California Municipal Financing Housing Authority. And Jamboree also secured financing from multiple sources, including a tax credit investor, which is Boston Capital. The private placement of the bonds when issued will be purchased by US Bank, and they will be the construction lender with the proceeds of those housing bonds. And then the permanent financing is proposed by the California Community Reinvestment Corporation, CCRC. The reason we did a preliminary award letter back in March was due to the fact that the home program rules changed significantly. Your city manager, Authority Director, explained relation to your Housing Authority budget, the extensive regulations. The home rules and regulations changed very significantly back in July of 2013, including how a Housing Authority is allowed to commit home program funds. Thus, we could only do this preliminary award letter. The requirement to commit the monies has now been satisfied by the funding sources that I've described, as well as the readiness of a scheduled performance to commence construction within the next 12 months, as well as to complete construction within the time periods within the home program. This project is one of several by Jamboree Housing in your community. They are, they have several projects already in your Stewart Drive and Buena Clinton project areas that I guess I'm proud to say that I've worked on in the 80s and the 90s and the 2000s. They're a very successful partner in your community for affordable housing and one of the major affordable housing developers in California with dozens and dozens of projects. The site is going to be a partnership, it's going to be a ground lease with United Methodist Church, it's about a five-acre site. The church will ground lease for a 60-year period to the developer entity, the Jamboree developer entity. We will have a 55-year affordable housing period. So this project and these agreements that are before you, one is the home agreement, it's the really big one, about 350 pages, but it does- it's the really big one, 350 pages, but it does outline the three loans that I've described to you that will, are all what are called residual receipts loans. Those residual receipts loans will be paid in a subordinate junior position. They're in effect gap financing. A component of this home evaluation had to do with a subsidy layering to evaluate the need for the project, for the local government subsidy. The project will be 47 units. There'll be one manager's unit of two bedrooms. Then we're going to have, it's interesting because it's two different buildings, building A is called, and building B. There's a senior component of 16 units of affordable housing for seniors and then the rest of the units will be non-senior family units with various amenities. The non-senior family component will have a courtyard, an exercise room, a roof terrace, enclosed ground level parking and small commercial office spaces. It's a mixed use project, which initially will be the leasing office. The senior component will be 16 one and two bedroom units. It will also include an activity room on each floor, a common kitchen on the first floor, clubhouse, a fitness room, rooftop terrace, ten enclosed single car garages. The allocation of the affordable units is between very low income, which is at 50% and below of area median income for Orange County, and 59% and below of area median income. There'll be 13 very low income covenanted units for 55 years and 33 low income. And while low income allows a range of 60 to 80%, due to some laws that became effective last year relating to your housing successor and the fact that certain monies are called CRF monies, supplemental educational revenue augmentation funds, the loan that's from the housing successor, if you will, a portion of those funds will be sourced from the CRF payments that will occur through the ROPS process that you're familiar with when you are acting as your successor agency. And the laws that were added last year require certain income targeting for those monies. And not, at least 30% of that money has to be spent on extremely low income and then not more than 20% for low income. So it leaves 50% of the money essentially at 59% and below. So in our negotiations, I thought it was important as these monies come in and the monies that are going to be loaned to Jamboree, that the income targeting would satisfy both some of the very low component as well as the low component, but at 59% and below. These units will also be replacement housing in connection with the LeMone judgment. You may recall that last year, there was a resolution of a lawsuit relating to the allegations concerning replacement housing and relocation and the Garden Grove did agree to provide certain replacement units. This project will satisfy all of those requirements for the replacement units and that's an important component in relation to some statutory constitutional provisions that establishes this as a low income housing project that meets all the statutory requirements. I do want to explain that a portion of the home funded loan, we call it the home loan, home loan of about $2,010,000. About $575,000 of that will be advanced, actually almost immediately by June 30th this year. Because these are home program funds, a portion of it, $575,000, is subject to potential de-obligation by HUD and you'd have to send it back to Washington DC and we don't want to do that. It's an important component of this, the subsidy to this project. So we will be putting into escrow and making available for a portion of the prepayment of ground rent, as well as eligible pre-development fees for this project. CRF loan, the additional subsidy loan that the housing authority will be provided, will not be dispersed until the completion of construction of this project, which is estimated to be the end of next year, by December 31 of 2016. That will be the second lien mortgage on this property. Then the third lien mortgage will be the home loan I've been talking about, the $1.6 million. And then the fourth lien will be this development agreement fee impact and that will be paid back from a portion of the developer's residual receipts.
Okay.
You have in your, we have before you resolutions of both the city council and the housing authority. Both of those resolutions approve the two agreements that are on your agenda tonight, as well as authorize the mayor and chairman and your city manager and authority director to make, with consultation with your legal counsel, to make some minor changes. We are still tweaking the agreement that's in your agenda, but they are non-material changes. And it also authorizes the ability to enter into one or more implementation agreements as necessary. This agreement needed to be done by June 30th in order to protect the home funds, but the closing, if you will, the financing closing, we don't expect to occur until between August and October.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's a little bit of urgency here.
Yes.
Any, is there a motion for item seven A one and two? For the city council only, I make the motion to approve.
I second it.
Please vote.
Most received four yes votes.
And for the housing authority, I make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I second it.
Please vote.
Most received five yes votes.
Any matters from our director commissioners? For the housing authority?
No.
Okay. Mr. Roder?
No, sir.
Okay. At this time, we'll adjourn the housing authority. I was wondering the same thing. Who is our vice chair?
Adam Clark?
Oh, yes.
Who's the vice chair for the successor agency?
Successor agency, um, Beard.
A roll call vote for the successor agency? Thanks, buddy.
Okay. Member Bree?
Ham.
Member Wynn?
Yes.
Member Fong?
Here.
Vice Chair Beard?
Here.
Chair Jones.
Okay, items before, so consent items.
Excuse me, we need to have oral communications.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oral communication on successor agency matters? Do we have any cards for successor? We are checking.
For successor and sanitary, right?
Successor, city council and sanitary. All of them, so this would be the whole stack of cards.
All right. I'll, I'll take over.
Okay.
Marine Blackman?
This is the housing.
I'm sorry, you're here for item 20.
Of the two that work for.
Give me one second. All right. Charles Mitchell.
Good name, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. Giving the anniversary of that terrible Supreme Court decision allowing the taking of private property by eminent domain. Comes to mind the fact that Sacramento is in the process of rebuilding the redevelopment agencies under a different name. There have been many situations where people have lost their properties due to eminent domain and the projects that the process was intended for were never built. Now, there is a situation in Santa Ana, for instance, where many people are going to be losing their homes and other properties because the city wants to widen the streets. I think it's important that people are taking into consideration not just properties. When you take someone's home through eminent domain, it may be for a great practical purpose, maybe it needs to be done to improve city streets or for a city project. But the impact on the people who live in that home cannot be undervalued. They live in a neighborhood. They know their neighbors. And we've lived in Garden Grove since 1973 and we've had many different neighbors. Some were very good friends. One family moved out due to economic situations, thanks to Sacramento. We have friends and neighbors on both sides. We've watched a neighbor on one side and their children grow from toddlers all the way up to adults and now they're out on their own. But they too are now having to move. And again, probably for economic reasons. Again, thank you Sacramento. But when you think about what a home means to a family, it's not the same as someone just moving from one place to another. There's relationships that are broken and bonds of friendship that are broken. And I think the city needs to really be very careful about the use coming up of eminent domain to remove people from their homes. Because trying to move to a new location is not only very expensive, it's very heartrending. As they say, we have neighbors and we have friends, but what's the difference between a neighbor and a friend? Well, my own definition is, a neighbor may lend you his tools, but a friend will help you use them. Thank you.
Kendall Torson, Rick Morris.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm here to, to report on our Avenger Superheroes Half Marathon last November and the Star Wars Half Marathon last January. And here to report that participants were very excited about the running through the city of Garden Grove through portions of the half marathon. So we're really excited about that and want to thank you for your support there. We did have a few hiccups on our traffic patterns during the Star Wars Half Marathon and we've addressed that coming up. So we're here thanking you for your support tonight for, I believe it's 19E, is that correct, Kathy, 19E? For, again, for the Avenger Superheroes Half Marathon that will come up November 15th this year and for the Star Wars Half Marathon that will be January 17th in 2016. And those are on the agenda tonight. So we thank you for that. Our runners, thank you, approximately 25,000 or so runners for the two events coming through the city. Economic impact is roughly $50 million to the, to the region. So hopefully a large portion of that is spent here in Garden Grove. So I want to thank you for that. I also want to thank staff who's made it very easy for us to work with the city. And I just want to call out a couple of names, Heidi and Janet, who work with us, outstanding support and we really appreciate it. Of course, the, the fire department, the police department will help out too. So here to thank you very much for all that.
Thank you. Peter Katz?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council staff and audience. First, I would like to ask the mayor to adjourn this meeting in honor of on June 25th, 1965, 50 years ago, was the greatest aviation disaster in Orange County history. When a C-135 slammed into Loma Ridge, killing 72 Marines and 12 airmen in Irvine, they were from all cities in Orange County, including Garden Grove. And this is the 50th anniversary this weekend of that disaster. I want to talk a little bit here about the budget. You know, democracy must be something more than four wolves and a sheep deciding what to have for dinner. I was looking at the budget here about dinner. The four greatest sources of revenue for this city, sales tax, property tax, motor vehicle tax and transit occupancy tax. The first three over a 10-year period have remained constant. They go up a little and they go down a little, but nothing has really changed over 10 years. Now, take a look at the transit occupancy tax. That has almost tripled, 150% increase in 10 years. So this is where the bread is buttered, is on Harbor Boulevard. And if you have any doubts, you should take a look this week at the Orange County Register that did a survey here, that Disneyland did, that the impact of Disneyland on Harbor to the surrounding communities is valued at $5.7 billion in the Southern California area as a result. So if you look at the history of Harbor and you look at the history of Beach Boulevard, which one developed? They both were here before Garden Grove and they were here for 60 some odd years. Beach Boulevard should have developed faster because it has direct access to the sea, into the ocean, but it was because of Disneyland that Harbor developed. And so that's where the bread and butter, whatever you want to do in the city, that's where your money and your economic engine is going to come from. And to give you another food for thought, 95% of the world's consumers are now outside of the United States. In California, 4.7 million jobs are in the export and import business and consumer goods and tourism. Tourism is going to be the economic engine, whether we like it or not, that will drive this county into the next century. So in this budget, as we look at items to, to cut or not cut, we just need to put some more money up there. I hate to say it, but that's where the money and that's where the future of the city is going to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Verla Lambert?
I'm up here tonight to ramble. That's what I do best. And if I don't get finished, I'll be back in two weeks. I'm going to talk museum versus budget. Museum, wonderful concept. I have heard and that we made this for history, for our young. I understand that. History is taught in school. I know that some of the history has been removed from school and that's another thing that we'll have to talk about later. Families should explain history to their young. They may not want them to know. In the museum, they're, they're for them anyway, so there's no support there. The last couple of years, I have learned some of what Leo's war history was on, as a Raksan airborne 187th unit. It was more than just packing parachutes. And I have the very great privilege of hearing the story of one of our American-born Japanese and her experience of the internment during World War II. And I sat in on the movie of the Vietnam museum and seen the stats overwhelming. I went to Ronnie Higgins dedication in Miles Square Park. I attended the Call of Duty for our own Garden Grove PD, Police Department, 28th Memorial Service. We need to be more faithful on our budget to preserve and to protect what these folks have fought for. Put the museum on a backboard. Put the museum on a backboard for a while. Save the concept. It needs some tweaking. And any of this new staffing, they're just going to have to get together and work with the staff that you have. Bring in some more volunteers, some more interns from the schools. We don't need to hire any more people until we get this budget down to where it's workable. Garden Grove Neighborhood Association has eight-plus on the board members. I'm working with them. It's hard to jiggle an association, jobs, and family. And I can't imagine Garden Grove having one officer for every thousand residents. You remember that old phrase? Where's a cop when you really need one? I have been very lucky so far, but the odds are growing. And this is the way I see it. Think about it, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Many of you know me other than maybe Christopher. But I've been resident of Garden Grove for 52 years. In fact, the day we moved in our home on Hampton Avenue was the day that our great President Kennedy was shot and killed. So it's a day we all remember. I stand here before you with a complaint, and it's no complaint. We have buses that park in behind hotels in the parking lot, and the fumes, diesel fumes go over the wall on the south side and into our residents, the homes that are on the other side. And we turned in the complaint years ago, and the people at, I'm trying to remember the name of the hotel that's directly in the center. Anyway, that's on the south side of Harbor and Chapman, southwest corner. Anyway, with summer coming on, we have a lot of traffic. And tourism is our profit, right? We're going to make a lot of money. But I don't want to put my life in danger, or my wife's life in danger. I'm an old man. I'll be 78 come this July 2nd. And I would like to go on a little further. Originally, they painted, the hotel management painted, no parking, no bus parking on the concrete wall that runs to the south side of the parking lot. And that kept them away, but they're ignoring that now. So it would be helpful if they're reminded to move the buses to the other side of parking, which they were doing before. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, sorry, I'm six today, so I make up. I received the licence notice from sanitary agency, and this is not my account, this is rent account. And I didn't know what to do here on the notice. They say here we will be held here at this time, so I get cam, but I'm not sure what I should do in this case.
I do know that staff is available for you to speak to prior to that public hearing to make sure if there's a glitch or a change in the notice.
Okay, we'll have staff come out and get you on that. All right. Is there anything else you wanted to say?
Um, no, I'll do about that one.
Okay, thank you.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, honourable members, and the members of the staff. My name is John Holm. My wife and I have been residents here for over 35 years. I am by trade a software engineer. I've had a chance to work for several hundred companies here in Southern California. This is my segue. And of those several hundred, 12 went bankrupt, large companies, $800 million a year companies. And I saw a pattern with all of the bankruptcies, and it was real simple. They took their eye off the cash register. The Neighborhood Association has asked me to analyze your budget, and I am bewildered. There's a lot of things missing from it that I don't see that I know that you're aware. So I ask each of you on the council and the staff to keep your eye on the cash register. Very important. That's my point.
Any responses to these public comments, colleagues? Real quick, Mayor, to the gentleman who had the issue with the bus parking near the wall there, have you addressed it with the hotel management yet, and have they not corrected it, or?
Uh, no, I haven't repeated that, no.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Roder.
Mr. Mayor, I was going to suggest, if the gentleman did provide contact information on his speaker's card, we will follow up with him and contact the hotel and help he and his neighbors with this item.
Yes. Thank you, Senator.
But it was for budget, which is a public hearing. That's later.
Okay, all right. Thank you. This time, we're going to recess the city council and sanitary district and conduct the successor agency business.
Okay, we've already had rolls, so consent items are the first thing on the agenda. I'm going to entertain a motion.
I may motion to approve that, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote.
Motion received for yes votes.
Public hearings regarding adoption of resolution for the successor agency budget. Is there a staff report?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Is it on your screen?
No, we don't see anything on our screen.
Usually it's flipped to that hole.
Which one? It's a minute here, I think. It's kind of coming up on the screen, but I believe you have the, maybe you can follow along.
Yes.
IT staff will come in and see if they can fix it. But by getting growth successor agency, we do have a balanced budget for fiscal year 2015, 16. And basically, the successor agency budget, again, that's money in, money out. The only monies that we get are basically monies that are authorized through, by the state, through the, what we call the ROBS system, the Recognized Obligation Payment System of the Prior Redevelopment Agency. And our goal for the entire successor agency, the objective is to complete and file all the necessary payment obligation schedules through June 30, 2016, and to manage and pay those ROBS as approved. And secondly, you know, to implement the remaining projects that are approved by the Department of Finance, all the prior agency obligations that are still in progress. And the three of them that we have are the Great Wolf Hotel, which is in progress, and also the Side B2, that is in negotiations in terms of kicking off, and the Brokers Triangle that we are hoping to break ground sometime this year. In terms of numbers, we are projecting a total of $18.179 million in total receipts from, as approved by the state. And the entire amount will be used to pay off all the necessary recognized obligations and operations and overhead associated with implementing or executing those obligation payments. And $17.5 million directly for the obligation payments, and about $624,000 is for the operations and overhead to implement that program. And that's basically the budget for the successor agency. We don't have any beginning balance, we don't have any ending balance. It's all the monies that I received are used to pay off all those obligations, and that's it. I can answer any questions that you have.
Any questions? No, seeing none. This is a public hearing, so we'll open it up for people who want to speak on the successor agency budget. Seeing here and then, the public hearing's closed. We'll get back to successor agency. entertain a motion.
Move to approve. Second.
Please vote.
Motion received for yes votes.
Will we convene the sanitary district with Chair Fan?
Yes. Can you please call roll?
Member Bowie?
Here.
Member Jones? Member Wynn?
Yes.
Vice President Beard?
Here.
President Pham?
Here. We have consent items. May I have a motion for item 15A, please? Move approval. Second. Call for a vote, please.
Motion received for yes votes.
We have three public hearings. First off, 16B.
Yes, it's regarding charges for sewer services in areas that extend beyond the city limits, and Jeff Kuramoto from the Finance Department is here to provide that report.
Thank you, Mrs. Baylor. District Board President and Board Members. Item 16A is the annual process that allows the Garden Grove Sanitary District to collect sewer service charges on the property tax roll for those sewer customers that are outside the city limits, that do not receive water services from the city. This is the section of the district in the county area near Anaheim and Stanton, just north of Catella Avenue, and the Garden Grove city limits. The bulk of the city sewer fees are collected on the city water bills. In order to place these outside-the-city-limit sewer charges on the tax roll, the board must hold a public hearing on whether to approve the list of charges proposed to be collected on the tax roll and adopt a resolution approving the report. The tax resolution would approve the annual report and authorize the collection on the tax roll of the sewer service fees for property served by the Garden Grove Sanitary District and located outside the city limits. The total number of parcels that these fees apply to is 1,851, and the total amount to be collected is $262,273. It is recommended that the Sanitary District Board of Directors conduct a public hearing, adopt a attached resolution approving the report, and authorizing the collection of sewer fees for properties served by the Garden Grove Sanitary District and located outside the city limits by four affirmative votes. And direct staff to file the necessary documentation with the county for the collection of the fees on the property tax bills. This concludes staff's report, and we are available for any questions you may have.
Any questions for staff?
Before we get to the point where we put it to the KATI tax, is there a process where we would allow the, you know, property owner to, you know, come for help? Because I do not want, you know, it to be, you know, a severe burden on the elderly or the people who are, you know, become unemployed, and their house certainly, you know, being subject to a lien by, you know, not being able to pay that.
Councilman, these are charges for sewer services that we have done in this way for a very long time, and it's not like late charges or anything, it's the regular sewer fees for these homeowners. And the only reason why we collect it through the tax roll is because they are not within the city limit, and they do not receive water services from the city. Because usually, we combine the billing on our water and sewer billing in one. But these are the ones that are in the islands, what we call the islands, I believe, and we don't service, we don't offer water service in that area. And that's why we put them on the tax roll to collect. And we have been doing this for, since, for a very long time, annually.
So we provide sanitary services to some people that are not living in the city?
Well, yeah, the boundaries are not contiguous. You know, there are some people that we provide sanitary sewer service to that are not within the city limits currently.
Mr. Nixon?
Just for clarification, the reason for that is that a number of years ago, the city took over what was known as the Garden Grove Sanitary District, which was a separate public agency whose boundaries were not contiguous with the city. So there were some areas in that district that were outside the city. So when the city acquired that district through a LAFCO process, the Local Agency Formation Commission, as a result, the city wound up with small areas within the sanitary district that we have jurisdiction over as a sanitary district that are still just outside the city. Just a few small areas that it applies to.
All right. Any other questions? Are we going one by one, public hearing? Okay. Yes. All right, I'd like to have to open up this, the floor for any public here on this issue. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And Madam Secretary, do you have received any protests on this issue?
I haven't received any, no.
Okay. Any further discussion, members? All right, entertain a motion to approve this resolution, item 16A. Second?
Second.
Call for a vote, please.
Motion received for yes votes.
16B, please.
Item 16B relates to the sanitary district's improvement district number one. This improvement district is made up of those areas of the city that, prior to becoming a subsidiary district of the city in 1997, were formerly in the Midway City Sanitary District. The Midway City Sanitary District collected sanitary service charges by placing them on the tax roll. In order to continue this system for the convenience of these customers and the waste collector, the Sanitary Board of Directors must, each year, conduct a public hearing, adopt a attached resolution approving the report, and authorizing the collection on the tax roll of disposal and refuse collection fees in district number one. The service charge for the standard residential service in district number one is $19.25 a month, or $231 per year. The total number of parcels these fees apply to is 5,695, and the total amount to be collected is $1,328,481. A list of the charges has been prepared and filed with the secretary, containing a description of each parcel of real property receiving services for the refuse collection and disposal services in the improvement district number one, and the proposed charges for each parcel. Staff recommends that the Sanitary District Board of Directors conduct the public hearing, adopt a tax resolution approving the report, and authorizing the collection on the tax roll of disposal and refuse collection fees in district number one by four affirmative votes, and direct staff to file the necessary documentation with the county for the collection of the fees on the property tax bills. This concludes staff's report, and we are available for any questions.
Any questions for staff? I have a question. As far as the cost has gone up much at all, it has been consistent?
The cost hasn't gone up that much from last year. And I think the only increase in the service charge this year is a 1.67% landfill pass-through, and that equates to about, I think, $0.06 a month. And there is no CPI increase for the year compared to last year.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any other questions? All right, I'd like to open up the, uh, floor for public hearings on this issue. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any protests, Madam Secretary?
No.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. Call for a vote to approve this motion, please. This, uh, resolution, sorry.
Move adoption.
Second. Call for a vote, please.
Motion received for yes votes.
Item sixteen C?
Item sixteen C asks the sanitary district board adopt the attached resolution adopting the report and authorizing the imposition of liens for collection of delinquent refuse collection and disposal fees on the property tax bills. Republic Waste Service Bill bills customers quarterly for the refuse collection and solid waste disposal. If a billing remains unpaid for a period of sixty days or more, at the end of the fiscal year, the assessment process may be implemented. The last relevant billing was prepared and mailed in February of this year. All charges remaining on that billing became delinquent May first, two thousand and fifteen. Sixty days after that delinquency date, the delinquent amount plus the associated ten percent penalty may be filed with the county auditor. Payments will be accepted through July seventeenth, and the balance will be placed on the tax roll. The amount submitted and recorded by parcel will be collected at the same time and in the same manner as regular county property taxes. The parcels also become subject to the same penalties and to the same procedure for foreclosure and sale as provided for the ordinary county taxes. Prior to the fees becoming a lien against the property, the individual property owner is notified of the delinquent amount and the date and the time of the public hearing. To ensure, to further ensure that all parties are aware of the potential lien, a notice announcing this hearing date was published in the Orange County News, June third and June tenth of this year. It is recommended that the board of directors conduct a public hearing, adopt the attached resolution authorizing the imposition of liens for the collection of delinquent refuse collection and disposal fees by four affirmative votes, direct staff to file the necessary documentation with the county for assessment on the appropriate parcels. This concludes staff's report, and we are available for any questions.
Any questions for staff? Uh, that lady who was here a while ago, was she here to discuss on this issue? Are we aware what her issues were?
Uh, she was, and we got her information, and we're gonna talk to the disposal company and, and see, you know, if there's anything we can do. Um, oftentimes what happens is, um, they have a tenant that skips out on them, and they didn't pay the trash bill.
Mm-hmm.
And so because it's a property-related fee, these go to the landlords as well. And so, um, she could have called us, but she came down, and so we'll call her back. We have, these don't actually go to the county until the beginning of August.
Okay.
And they still have till July seventeenth to pay them.
All right.
So we had three people show up tonight, and we're gonna work with all of them to get them taken care of.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you. Any other, uh, people want to comment on this for a public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Uh, any protest, aside from the three that we talked about?
No.
Okay. Um, any further discussion? All right. If not, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt the resolution, please?
I'll move.
Second.
Call for a vote, please.
Motion received for yes votes.
Item sixteen D?
Is it coming?
Looking, is it, yeah.
Having some, um...
This next item is the adoption of the annual sanitary district budget, and Kingsley Okuriki is here to get, provide that report.
Uh, thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, District Board President, Board Members, with this item, staff is requesting that the sanitary district board review the proposed budget and approve the attached resolutions adopting the annual budget of the Garden Grove Sanitary District for fiscal year two thousand fifteen, sixteen. Uh, the more detailed, um, operational goals for next fiscal year, uh, are outlined in the memo in your packet. Uh, if you have them highlighted here, um, on the slide. And, uh, I believe we have district staff in the back, and if necessary, they can explain or answer any particular questions you have relative to...
Successor agency.
Uh, excuse me. That's not what I have on here. Something isn't...
Technical difficulties.
It's not working. I have, I have, I have sanitary district on here, but... Oh, we have to go, um, pepper this time.
Well, I don't know what I did, uh, except for it's supposed to be...
Um, Houston, we have a problem. Um, I, I, I apologize to look at your handouts, uh, because it's the same presentation. I have it on my laptop, I'm not sure why it's not showing up there. Anyway, if you found on the, uh, presentation, I'm on page, um, page twelve of the presentation. Okay, continue on, on page twelve. For the fiscal year, we do have a balanced budget, and, uh, the sanitary district is made up of, of the sewer and the solid waste, uh, program. And, um, uh, in terms of, uh, the goals to highlight... Yeah? In terms of the goals to highlight, um, they are intending to continue, uh, plant sewer capital program, the capacity and structural, uh, program that we have previously approved several years ago. And this year, they are intending to continue, um, manhole inspections and, uh, replacement programs accordingly. And, um, they're on the sewer side as well, they're intending to continue the fat oil and grease control education all across the city. And, uh, with the, with respect to solid waste, I think the primary goal is to continue the AB nine thirty-nine waste division efforts, uh, from the landfill. Uh, in terms of numbers, if we take the sewer funds, uh, first, um, the projected revenue from sewer operations is approximately nine point five million dollars. The total budget that we're asking you to adopt, uh, it's about twelve point four million dollars, and, um, uh, four point three million dollars, million dollars of that goes to operations and maintenance. We have contractual services of approximately one point two million dollars. Debt service for the outstanding bonds of, uh, the sewer fund takes up about one point five million dollars. And then we have capital program that is slated to be engaged during the fiscal year, um, of, uh, for replacement companies, and that, that's one point nine million dollars. And, uh, the actual capital improvement totals about three point five million dollars. Uh, we do have a balance in the, um, sewer funds of approximately, uh, twelve million dollars, and all of that is reserved for future capital work. Because, uh, several years ago, we actually did a, uh, study. Uh, it did show that we have significant amount of, um, retrofit, uh, to be done throughout the sewer lines in the city, and, uh, all that money is, uh, being, uh, set aside to continue to do that work every year. Uh, and, uh, I believe, um, um, you know, as we go forward, um, that may not even be enough to accomplish all the, um, uh, work that needs to be done. But anyway, that's sewer, and we do have a balanced budget that we're presenting for you for sewer. Next is the, uh, solid waste, uh, which is the solid waste contract that we have with the city hall. Uh, projected, uh, receipts of city collections, uh, it's about three point two million dollars. And, uh, basically, um, most of the, uh, collections now, uh, the payments are paid directly to the hall. The people that still prefer to come to the city hall, uh, we do take their payments, and we, um, uh, we collect those payments and, and turn around and remit it to the, uh, to the hall. Uh, in terms of uses, operations, uh, maintenance takes up about a, a million two. Uh, we have, uh, two hundred thousand dollars that, uh, we are proposing to set aside in, in our reserves, uh, for the, uh, solid waste. And, uh, contractual services, that one point seven nine million dollars is basically money that we've collected across the counter from people that come into city hall that we're going to turn around and, uh, send to the, um, uh, service provider. Um, and the balance is, uh, that we're projecting is, uh, a small balance of about thirty-nine thousand dollars for the solid waste. And with that, uh, both sewer and solid waste, um, we have balanced budget in those, and, uh, we are asking that you approve the resolutions, uh, attached in your packet to, uh, adopt, um, fiscal year two thousand fifteen, sixteen, um, budget for, uh, the sanitary district.
Any other questions? I'd like to make a motion, uh, request a motion to adopt the budget for the sanitary district, please?
It's a...
What's that?
It's a public hearing.
Oh, it is? I didn't know that. Okay. Apologies. All right. Anything for a public hearing on this issue? Okay, seeing none. Any protest issue on this one here, Madam Secretary? Okay, all right. All right, then, if there's no comments, more public hearings, I'd ask to call for a vote, or not, please. And move the motion. Second. Call for a vote, please.
Motion received for yes votes. The next item is also part of the budget process for sanitary district, it's the appropriations resolution, and Kingsley Okuriki is here.
Uh, thank you, Madam Secretary, uh, Board President, members of the board. Article thirteen B of the California Constitution is amended by Proposition Four, the GAN Initiative Places Annual Limit on the Appropriations of Act Proceeds that can be made by all levels of government in the state, including the sanitary district. The annual spending limit is based on the amount of appropriations in fiscal year nineteen seventy-eight, seventy-nine, which is the base year. Subsequent year's spending limits are calculated by adjusting that base year by annual population growth and cost of living factors that are provided by the State Department of Finance. Um, the co, for the cost of living, the growth factor provided by the state, uh, for the fiscal year two thousand fifteen, sixteen is three point eight-two percent. And that represents the change in California per capita personal income. The county population growth factor of one point zero eight, uh, is what was, what's we are using in this calculation. And, uh, based on these factors, the calculated, um, fiscal year, um, fifteen, sixteen appropriation limit for the district is approximately, I believe, eleven point seven million dollars. And, um, the total appropriation in the district subject to this limit is about two point four eight million dollars, and the difference is the gap from which additional appropriations can be made. And, um, so there's a lot of difference between that, um, what's authorized and what you can do in terms of appropriations, so long as we have enough revenues to cover that. Um, with that, staff is recommending that the board, board adopt the, um, appropriation limit resolution setting the GAN limit, um, as recommended by staff.
Okay. Any questions? Do we also have a public here on this one, too? Any comments for the public on this issue? Seeing none, close the public hearing. And I'd like to make a motion, uh, call for a vote on the motion to adopt this resolution, please. And move it.
Second.
Call for a vote, please.
Motion received for yes votes.
Any other matters from the board on this issue? Okay. Seeing none, we'll adjourn the sanitary district, and we'll reconvene it on Tuesday, July twenty-eighth at six-thirty. Back to City Council.
Thank you. I reconvene the City Council meeting with consent items nineteen.
Yes, items nineteen A through nineteen G can be acted on simultaneously unless a council member would like to pull an item for, um, separate discussion.
I'm gonna entertain a motion. I'll second that. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I would like to discuss on item nineteen E.
Sure.
Uh, I do, uh, I asked staff early about, uh, the impact of the, uh, you know, the, this is about a question, uh, for half marathon event, and I do not get enough, uh, answer to help me, uh, to vote on this issue. Uh, staff had asked me for a couple weeks to, you know, do the research and present with more information. I'm concerned here because even though generally the marathon is a very, you know, very good things, and, uh, I would support it that, but I'm also concerned that we certainly have a lot of event that require, you know, script closure along Harbor and Main Street downtown. And I'm concerned that with the open script, uh, event, uh, the two marathons, the one that we have during the, you know, the recovery weekend or the week before that, and then now this, I think we are subject that area to too many event that require, uh, you know, script closure and would be, uh, an impact to, uh, to local business and resident. So I would like to have that understood before I can, you know, make the decision. So I would like to request that this item be tabled to the next meeting.
There would need to be a, a second on that. Hearing and seeing none. We'll continue on with existing motion on the table that has received a second. Is there any discussion? Please vote.
Before we continue, Mr. Mayor...
Okay.
I'm trying to just rational in my mind. Uh, is there a need to come to a vote for this right now, right here? Because as a matter of courtesy to a council member, I would like to second that, at least give him the chance to vote upon that, if there's no urgency to approve this matter tonight.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, these events are not scheduled to take place until next November, uh, so you do have time. Should the council, uh, want to continue the matter for two weeks, you do have time to do that, uh, without affecting the events. The only thing that I would ask is if there is specific information to be brought back to the council, that that be clarified this evening, so we know what you need to make that decision. In discussion with, uh, Councilmember Bowie, his concern, as he noted, was the numbers of events and the impact of those events on residents and businesses downtown. Um, that certainly is a legitimate point of question. I'm not sure what information, however, we can bring you back to, to help with that discussion.
Well, you know, we can discuss that matter right now. Uh, we do have staff that's ready to answer questions, so would you like to do that?
Sure, I, I, I would be glad to. The reason that I asked for a delay, uh, for two weeks is because I asked staff during the agenda review, and staff was not able to answer my, my specific question. That's why I asked, you know, if staff have a couple weeks, resourcing information and provide to us, then I would be happy to, to make a decision. But if, if staff are ready to answer that now, then I would be, you know, I would, uh, do that now. So my, my question is very, very specific. You know, what impact do we have on, on the Main Street downtown and on people who, you know, uh, who live along Harbor? I understand, uh, a couple people along Harbor, for example, the owner of the McDonald have come many times and, and expressed her frustration with the event. And, uh, and so I, 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 I would like to know, you know, is there any other business that are low, uh, that are impacted by it, but they just so busy, they did not come and, and, and talk to me about it. And so that's why I would like to, you know, staff to let me know. Because I have no way to, to, to tell whether what their complaint is, is legitimate or not. So I'd like to ask staff to tell me. Do we have a concern here or not? Is it impacting the resident and, and the business?
Okay. Um, Councilmember Bowie, um, I can answer those questions for you. Um, just to kind of go over the three runs, we have, as you mentioned, the strawberry stomp, five K, the Avengers Half Marathon, and the Star Wars Half Marathon. The five K for the strawberry stomp, it is, um, set up in a way where it just kind of follows the route of the parade route, the existing strawberry festival parade, except for Main Street. Um, they are required to collect signatures for that event and ensure that all the businesses who are gonna be impacted by the closure are on board with closing the street down for the event. Um, so that event was, is something in an existing street closure that we're adding. The two half marathon events are different routes. Um, the Avengers only goes through city streets about three miles, and it comes down Harbor coming south, and it turns left on Chapman, and then up, it goes south on Lewis. So the impact is not as large as the other events, um, and we do advise all the residents and businesses that are gonna be impacted by the closure. The Star Wars Half Marathon does come down Harbor all the way to The, uh, Star Wars Half Marathon does come down Harbor all the way to Gardengrove Boulevard. Then it turns, um, west on Gardengrove Boulevard and then it comes through the civic center area. So it does come through Main Street. Um, I know that there were some concerns for McDonald's last year. However, the streets that were closed did not impact the entrance into the McDonald's parking lot area.
And do you know the impact to the, to the, to the extent, you know, what impact it would be to the resident and the other business that are affected by this route?
I don't know if I can answer fully the question now, but the way that the street, street closure setup for the Disney Half Marathons is it starts on a Sunday morning at Disneyland at the resort and it comes through our streets about approximately seven AM. And the way it works is that they start reopening the streets after the last runner. So streets start opening up anywhere between nine AM and ten-thirty AM along the route.
So generally it would be affecting the resident from about, uh, six o'clock or seven o'clock?
Yes.
Until about, at the latest, ten AM, even morning? That would be on a weekend?
Yes, it would be anywhere between a three hour to four hour period that they would be affected on a Sunday morning.
If I would allow this, well, what mechanism would we have to cap, uh, determine, you know, after the fact? You know, because it's, it's obvious that you do not have the answer for me, uh, at this point, you know, what the impact would be. So if we would allow this event, what mechanism do we have so that we can get the feedback and for us to understand what impact it would be, you know, for the resident as well as the, as a business? So that in the future, you know, the next year, following years, we have the information for, you know, for us to, uh, to decide whether we should continue or should not continue this, this, uh, this event.
So, um, we do, uh, provide residents with notices, notice letters. So what we could do is possibly add information on there to give us feedback. Um, that would be a way that, there are a lot of residents that would be impacted and notified. So, um, one way of reaching out to them is providing them, uh, a way of contacting us and letting us know if there was any issues along the street closure.
I, I'd like to take a more proactive. To me, it's not, uh, not, uh, not appropriate for us just to notify the resident that, hey, your street will be closed from that time to that time. If you have any concern, contacting us. That to me is not, uh, a proactive, uh, measure to, to provide good services to a resident. I would like for us to be more proactive and engage them and ask them. Contact the people who do, who do directly along that route and ask them to see if, if they have any concern. Because a lot of time, if you send me an email, I'm so busy. As I do not like it, but I would not take the time to, to respond. Is that, is that fair or maybe that's too much to ask you?
Mr. Roder?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm thinking as Councilmember Bowie is kind of laying that out, I'm, I'm thinking that instead of including the request for feedback with the notices, street closures, that perhaps immediately after the event that, uh, we do a random survey, perhaps. Uh, I don't think it's necessary to contact everybody that received notice, but do a random survey of those and follow up to ask if there were any complications, if there were any inconveniences, uh, during the event, uh, rather than doing that as part of the initial notice. I, I think that's something we could probably do.
With that, do you have a question? Sure. Yeah, um, we, this event happened this, this year. It happened, yeah, Star Wars, the Star Wars.
Star Wars.
It's very successful, correct?
Yes.
Very successful. Did we get any data feedback besides maybe a few businesses or from many residents that you're aware of?
We had, um, one apartment complex that was locked in and we did, um, discuss already with the manager a way of handling the issues this following year for the event. Um, and then for McDonald's, I know that there was a complaint that came through. Um, beyond that, um, there wasn't really any major complaints that made it to city-
For a first time event, it's pretty good. Some complaints, we had learning experience as well. We, we saw some, you know, hitches in the process, but we, we can rectify those as well. And as the gentleman spoke, uh, from Disneyland represented, we, the area fifty million dollars, is that correct? So I think that it's a boost to our economy. I'm assuming these people come in, from us out of town, attend our hotels and such just for this one event. So we'll have two events this year. The strawberry festival, um, that was complete success. We didn't really see, receive any complaints. In fact, the, the, the runners increased over the previous year. It's very successful. It's a great addition to that. So I would, I, I would be in favor of a survey, but I think the survey is going to be positive. Sunday morning, very early in the morning, pretty much people are asleep anyway or just getting up around that time, most citizens. So, um, if you, some feedback would be good, but I'm totally supportive of this for what it does for our community and, and overall. I thought it's a great event. I'm glad, uh, stretching out to Gardengrove as well.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I may add, in terms of whatever follow-up we do proactively with the event to, uh, to get feedback from the business community and residents, I can tell you from the event planning standpoint, uh, the Disney representatives will be more than happy to work with us. Uh, that is not something they're going to put off to the city and say, well, that's your problem near your residence. No, they will be very much engaged and very much supportive in whatever that follow-up, uh, solicitation of opinion is.
Thank you. So at this point, Mr. Bowie, I, I can call for a vote?
Yes, I, I happy with what I hear and so I would be ready to support this.
Oh, okay. All right.
Is this a vote for the entire consent calendar?
Yes, this is the vote for the entire consent calendar as originally moved and seconded. Please vote. Okay.
Motion received for yes votes.
Thank you. And we have some public hearings.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, our, um, first public hearing is on the proposed budget for this city, um, for fiscal year two thousand fifteen, sixteen. And Kingsley O'Kuriki is here to give that report.
Uh, we'll give it a try and see if, um, this thing works.
Sure. I'm not holding my breath.
Mayor, I was going to stick chairs.
But it's not, it's not still, still not on the, um, desktops.
Usually it's plugged into that one.
If folks at home can see it, that's good. I, I have, we have copies.
Yeah, and the audience has copies as well.
Wonderful.
Yeah, everybody has a copy and, uh, you can fill out along, um, um, manually. I can say that. And, um, I think I'm starting on page, um-
Seventeen.
Um, seventeen. It's on the board there. Um, and this is, uh, yeah, our presentation for basic services. And basically, the basic services, uh, is the big catch-all, uh, funds of the city, the general fund and, uh, included in there is the gas tax funds and, um, the recreation funds. And, um, much like, uh, we talked about in the workshop, yeah, we go through this process where, you know, just give you a snapshot of, um, the current fiscal year, which ends, um, uh, basically, I believe in seven days, where we think we're going to end up. And then, uh, uh, the economic climate, you know, giving a context and, um, you know, forecasting for, for next year and preparing the, uh, proposed budget that we have in front of you for, for adoption tonight. Um, all right. We got it. Thank you. You're the star tonight. All right. Um, and so, uh, looking at the current, um, fiscal year that's about to end, um, in a few days, um, revenue is coming in quite well. Uh, we had some challenges, uh, with revenue, but at the end of the fiscal year, we think, uh, revenue will, uh, exceed budget, uh, to the tune of maybe half a million dollars. On the expenditure side, uh, we are doing quite well as well. And, uh, we are projecting at this point a labor cost of savings of approximately three million dollars. And what that essentially means is that, uh, given, uh, the construct, uh, in terms of how we adopted the budget at the beginning of the year, uh, uh, we're going to draw down less, uh, from, um, uh, the one, one-time funds or the reserves, uh, to end the fiscal year, which is a bit of good news, but the, uh, um, you know, deficit is still, structural deficit is still there. Um, so bottom line is that we'll end the fiscal year, but there won't be any monies to carry over to, uh, to next year. Um, just the numbers, numbers wise, um, if you look in the first column of numbers, uh, uh, that's the adapted budget and, uh, the second column there is the updated as of April fifteenth, how, what we're projecting, how we're going to end the fiscal year. And the third column there, you know, uh, shows the difference, um, uh, between them. And, uh, basically, um, if you, I highlighted, um, the, um, uh, the, what we call the savings. Um, and, um, most of it is on the expenditure side. As I indicated, if you look at the, uh, uh, top, um, number there on the right, on the fi- uh, third column, the five hundred dollars in, five hundred thousand dollars, excuse me, in, um, in revenue that, uh, we're receiving more than we budgeted. Uh, on the expenditure side, uh, we're saving approximately three million dollars. Uh, bottom line, with everything calculated, we have about three point four million dollars in, um, uh, savings, uh, updated budget versus adapted budget. And, uh, essentially, again, as I said earlier, uh, it doesn't mean, you know, all the balancing measures, as we indicated, uh, when we adopted the budget, uh, totals about eight point seven million dollars. We're, we're thinking that if everything ends, the way we're saying it will end in seven days, we will only need about five point three and, uh, three point four, uh, will still be there, uh, that we can draw upon, you know, sometime down the road if we need to. And, um, with that, you know, um, this, you know, very little or no projected, um, um, savings to carry over to next year. So this is, just gives you a picture, a snapshot of where we think we're going to end the current fiscal year. And, um, now, um, transitioning into the proposed, uh, basic budget, you know, in terms of context here, the economic landscape will continue to, the economic recovery is continuing, even though it's uneven. Uh, unemployment is down, uh, uh, which is good news, but employment levels, as reported, are not as high as it was before the recession. And, and that impacts, uh, you know, uh, uh, folks' confidence to spend, uh, going forward. So, uh, it's a misconfi- consumer confidence environment. Um, the other good news, uh, bit of good news is that the state, uh, has a balanced budget as well and in fact declaring some surplus. So it is, um, a breath of fresh air, at least on the local government side of things that, uh, the state would not be looking towards local governments as a means of balancing, uh, the state budget. Um, for city per se, you know, um, as, you know, as I've said a couple of times, I think we still have this, um, structural deficit and the goal is to continue to contend cost and to, uh, pursue new revenue sources and cost recovery, you know, as we can. And then, um, you know, bridge that short-term gap. We are hopeful that revenues will come in in a couple of years, but in the short-term, uh, breach, uh, the budget gap for the general fund, uh, with one-time, uh, funds. Um, now focusing on the revenue, uh, the, the big four, I think somebody mentioned it earlier tonight, too, um, sales tax. We, we're seeing some recovery in sales tax, you know, from the depth of the recession. Uh, and hotel tax continues to be our fastest growing revenue source. Uh, property tax, we are largely a built-out city and, uh, we don't expect any significant of, you know, huge growth in property tax, but it has been relatively speaking stable. Uh, motor vehicle tax is also stable and growing. And, uh, we are, um, hopeful, you know, uh, we have some major projects that I would think would generate some revenue, uh, uh, for the general fund, uh, in the coming years. Uh, the Great Wall of Large is, uh, one of the biggest ones and, um, they're looking at opening sometime next year. Uh, there's also the Brokers Triangle, which I think they will break ground sometime, um, in a, in a few months, actually. And, um, there's also discussions underway, uh, to jumpstart, um, side C and side B too. Um, this is a lot of numbers on this slide, uh, but just, uh, maybe highlight a couple of things on it. You know, um, the column highlighted in yellow is what we're proposing for next year. And if you fill out along the real page, I think, uh, handout is page, um, twenty-three. And just to point out, um, if you look at our sales tax, the very top, uh, row of numbers there, you go to two thousand nine, ten, uh, the depth of the recession, we declined to fourteen million dollars in sales tax, but since then, we have been recovering. But, uh, we did get, we did, um, um, receive, uh, sort of had a blow, uh, in the current fiscal year where we lost, um, a, a, a company that generates a significant amount of, uh, sales tax for us. Close to a million dollars went out the window. But luckily, you know, uh, we had some, um, other, uh, businesses do this business. We had Walmart coming to town and, um, we did experience some periods of high gas prices, uh, you know, some periods of, um, uh, of the year and that kind of made up for some of that loss. But at the end, I, you know, uh, uh, yeah, we're expecting that I will collect probably a million dollar less in sales tax. But I doubt if it is what I made up for that. Um, uh, the other company, property tax, has remained very stable. We think we'll collect everything that we estimated. Uh, motor vehicle tax, uh, will come in, um, maybe, uh, uh, we're projecting right now half a million dollar more than we projected. And, um, TOT, the hotel, um, uh, tax, we're again also expecting to come in, um, half a million dollars more than, than we expect, uh, that we projected. And, um, for next year, uh, looking, looking, um, at two thousand fifteen, sixteen, we think, uh, we'll have enough recovery in sales tax to come back to the level we originally projected for the current fiscal year, uh, for approximately twenty point five million dollars. And, um, we think, uh, also, well, we're, you know, uh, very hopeful and, uh, we believe that, um, transit occupancy tax next year will reach, uh, nineteen million dollars and maybe a little bit more when all is said and done. So that's our revenue picture and, uh, we're projecting a total of general proposed, uh, revenue of about ninety-five million dollars going in. Uh, on the expenditure side, uh, which is actually the budget that, uh, you are being asked to adopt tonight, um, cost containment continues to be a challenge and we're focusing on that. Uh, we've had some, um, growth on that expenditure side as a result of the, um, increases in our retirement contributions. And, um, our budget is such that it sort of grows by itself because once you come into the system, you know, people go from step A to step B and C and all of that. So there's a natural, um, sort of, uh, growth that happens. Uh, but nonetheless, you know, we did cut back a lot during the recession years and, um, this budget is sort of a catch-up budget. And, uh, you know, we look to, not in one, you know, um, in one first word, but gradually trying to restore service capacity for our citizens. And I will point out, uh, that are some of the additions that, um, uh, that we are including in the budget. And, um, again, the structural deficit is still there short-term, but that's, you know, um, we think, uh, going forward in the next couple of years, we might get to that point if we stay, uh, cost-conscious and cost containment continues to be a goal that, uh, we will achieve, um, we will get to that point where, you know, we have surplus instead of deficit. Yeah. The proposed budget, just to highlight, you know, we have the, it's a base budget with all the natural adjustments, uh, for retirement contributions and, um, all the step increases that, um, are associated with running the city. Um, and, uh, we do have some supplemental requests. Uh, uh, there's a couple of groups, the mandates. The mandates are the things that are, we are contractually obligated to do and the changes represent some of the, um, capacity, uh, upgrade or adjustments that we're making in the budget to, uh, meet service, service needs. We do have a set, another set of, uh, items. The items for council review or consideration, we'll take those up at the end. And, um, those items, uh, you have the opportunity to, uh, discuss them each one by one or you could discuss them together and put them all in the budget if you wish, um, and we'll go through that. And the other thing to point out is, uh, we have negotiations going on right now with all the labor groups. Uh, that is, there hasn't been any kind of resolutions, so that's not been, um, included. We've not included any estimates of that in the, in the budget. Whatever is determined, uh, when those, um, negotiations conclude will be a supplemental appropriation that will add to the budget that we're presenting to you tonight.
Question?
Yes.
Mr. Bowie?
Yes, uh, your projections show that, uh, we would have a balanced budget, uh, you know, based on the assumption that, uh, the, uh, labor negotiation will be along the line of what we are expecting. If, if they ask for more raise, then we might be under, you know, we, we face a, a little more, uh, deficit. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So, so it's not, it's not, it's not guaranteed that we would, we would have a balanced budget? It depend on how the negotiation with, with, you know, lower unit turn.
Right. That, that is correct. You know, depending on how the labor negotiations go, um, they will, you know, the only thing that it would increase the deficit of the budget. So if you do a supplemental- So if you do a supplemental appropriations to cover whatever is negotiated, that will be, uh, additional, um, uh, in addition to the budget here, and will expand the deficit, uh, the deficit a little bit.
Okay.
Depending on what it is. Um, now, just to walk through the numbers, you know, how the numbers shake, shake, you know, shake out for, for the, uh, general fund budget. Again, you know, our general purpose revenue is estimated at ninety-five. Uh, if you follow me on that page, uh, beneath twenty-six, ninety-five million dollars. And there's the gas tax component of operational gas tax and self-supporting bank that, um, adds, um, a million seven and six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to it. And, uh, we do have a transfer that we make every year from the Gulf, uh, fund, from the Gulf, uh, cost that we own, six hundred thousand dollars out of that, to, uh, to general fund every year, and, uh, one hundred thousand dollars for proactive risk management, uh, from our, uh, risk management funds. That's, uh, that adds up to seven hundred thousand dollars. So in terms of total resources available for the general fund to operate next year, on a annual basis, uh, we have about ninety-eight million dollars coming in that we're projecting to come in. Our base expenditure, when fully loaded, base expenditure with all the positions, um, uh, uh, that are currently approved and, uh, everything, including, uh, retirements and all, totaled about a hundred million, a hundred million dollars. So right off the bat, we do have that structural deficit of about one point nine, and, and, um, that's really good compared to where we were several years ago, recovering from the recession. Uh, but nonetheless, you know, we have some things that are, you know, that we can't avoid. Um, we do have a cable, uh, um, program that, that, um, uh, essentially, you know, like tonight, you know, uh, informs the citizens of what's going on in the city. And the general fund, uh, this year will support their cable program with about a half a million dollars. There's also the street lighting, um, uh, um, in the city that, uh, general fund has to, uh, so, you know, provide subsidy for that, uh, uh, in the fiscal year, projected at, um, three hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. And, um, several other stuff there, including park maintenance, uh, concrete replacement of, uh, four hundred thousand plus, and, um, economic development transfer of, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And as we, uh, talked, uh, about before in the workshop, um, the agency was dissolved, but the city has to continue to, uh, embark on economic development in order to, um, continue to grow, at least, you know, explore new revenue sources. Uh, but at some point, we need to start setting aside seed money to do some of that. And this is one of the, this is the beginning of that, we're saying we're going to set aside two hundred and fifty thousand dollars as part of the seed money for economic development activities. And, uh, initially, at least, uh, to do a study, you know, what is the SWOT analysis that tells us, tells council, you know, uh, what are the opportunities in the city? Where can you focus your development efforts, uh, to continue to grow, um, the city's, um, uh, economic base, tax base of, of revenue? And, uh, we do have, uh, things that are classified as mandates, um, that total in approximately, uh, one point four million dollars. And those are some big items, and I think one of the biggest ones is the, um, uh, uh, the police and fire red hot, uh, uh, radios and the backbone, uh, uh, emergency backbone structure within the county that we have to participate in. And then we have other budget requests, you know, um, that total in about, um, four hundred thousand dollars. So when you add all of those things, and these are things that you have, you know, I, I classify them as things you've got to do to keep the city running. Uh, they, it drives that deficit up to, uh, five point four eight million dollars. Um, we have the additional budget request that, um, uh, you know, the council review items that we'll take a look at. All of that total five hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So, we've not included it in this calculation. The calculations that I showed you before at the workshop contemplated that, but we've taken it out so you can make decisions whether to add them or, or add, uh, some of them. Uh, so with that, we have a deficit, um, of about five point four, uh, million dollars. And, uh, we are proposing that we use, um, uh, part of, uh, the Brokers Triangle project, when that kicks off and we transfer the loan, uh, part of the payment, two million dollars will come to the city, and we will apply that to this. And, uh, the remaining about three point five million dollars will draw from, um, proceeds from, uh, property sales that we have, uh, um, set aside, uh, uh, in, in the city to help balance the budget. So this is the summary, um, uh, we think we can use one-time proceeds to, um, make this work for the short term. Um, in terms of the mandates, you know, uh, here's a list of all the mandates. The big ones are there, if you can go down to animal service contract with the county, that's about two hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. And we're contract, we, we have contractual obligations to do that, and this is just the increase, uh, uh, for, for one year. I think the total contract, um, my understanding is close to a million dollars for animal control. Uh, we do also have, uh, we need to replace the police motorcycle, um, motorcycles. We have about eight of them, and, um, it is time to replace them with some new ones, um. And then we have the hot rad, hot ra- radio purchase, the eight hundred megahertz radio system that I was talking about, that by itself is about six hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. And that is something that is absolutely required to, uh, for our police unit department and, uh, fire department. Um, so the, the, uh, mandate is total about one point four. The next group is, uh, the side, the changes, which is things that we've done to, uh, begin to restore some capacities there. Uh, we do have, uh, within that group, um, two police officer positions that are being refunded, and, um, we think at least for six months, uh, they won't be, uh, onboard until maybe sometime in January. So we're budgeting, uh, for those two positions, um, uh, for six months. And we are also, um, budgeting for a public safety dispatch, uh, for six months as well. So those three positions will be added to ensure that, um, our police, um, department can continue to offer the excellent service that they do. Uh, we also have, um, uh, a request and, uh, you know, uh, human resources department to add, um, a personnel analyst that will help to, uh, fill some of the vacant positions that we have, uh, uh, in the city. So all of these, um, you know, uh, changes to restore capacity, uh, service capacity totaled about four hundred and forty-two, um, thousand dollars. With that, um, we, this is just casting the total budget in different, um, uh, ways. You're looking at it in terms of salaries and benefits, contractual commodities, and, you know, running a city is a level-intensive business, you know, almost seventy-five percent of the cost of the general fund is labor cost. And, um, uh, the next slide, uh, looks at it in terms of departments. You know, um, our police department is about forty-eight percent, fire twenty-one percent, and, uh, public works, uh, fourteen percent. And, um, that's, you know, this is normal, it's not any different from any other city. So, you know, just to highlight where the, uh, most dollars of the city go to. And, um, uh, now, this are the, uh, the next slide is the council, um, review items, and I'll pause you and let Alan, um, um, talk briefly on this.
Thank you, Mr. Oakley, and members of the council. As, uh, you know from the budget study session, we identified the items on the screen before the public and in your report as modifications, expansion, modifications or expansion of existing programs and services or new program and service efforts initiated by the council. Uh, we identified these in the budget. Uh, we do, uh, this evening have a very significant modification to this, and I want to mention it upfront, because it very well could impact the council's decision in terms of, uh, which or all of these items, uh, you choose to add to the budget. Following, uh, the general review with you as members of the council, uh, I had the opportunity to speak with, uh, Bill Murray of our Public Works Department regarding the tree planting program. More specifically, uh, whether that could possibly be, um, downsized somewhat to still make a significant dent in, uh, replacing the vacant tree wells that we have, begin the reforestation effort, uh, here in Garden Grove. Approximately ninety thousand of the two hundred and fifty-three thousand is for an additional staff position for the program. We talked about whether or not that differential could be reduced if we approached it in, in planting fewer trees. Out of that discussion, we also spoke about the impact of the current drought and what the governor's announcement, uh, uh, relative to water conservation means to this program, which was created before that pronouncement came out. We are of the opinion at this point in time that it would be in our best interest, as much as we would very much recommend getting in and planting more trees, but in loud, in light of the current drought conditions, we simply don't think the timing is good to approach that right now. You want to make sure that as we plant more parkway trees and the vacant, uh, uh, tree wells and sidewalks, that those trees will be successful and will survive. And our concern is, under the current drought conditions and restrictions on watering, that we can't give you and residents of Garden Grove the assurance that if we plant this many trees, and we're talking, uh, uh, in thousands, that they would be successful and survive. So with that in mind, we would respectfully, uh, suggest that we defer, uh, adding this item, uh, to the budget this year until the water conservation plan is on more solid footing and we have some, uh, potentially, uh, far better conditions to make sure that the public investment in parkway trees is a permanent investment. So that is, uh, the significant change on this item, and we are ready and prepared to address any questions council has on the balance of these items. We would suggest that you either, uh, uh, act on these items individually or do it as a consent calendar with all the items listed. Again, with the exception of the tree planting program, which we think is a, a solid investment in the community, but it, it needs to be deferred so that we have a, a good condition, make sure the trees are successful.
Okay, so colleagues, right now, would be time for questions for staff, but I would like to entertain having a break, since it's been, um, more than a couple hours.
I would second that.
Okay, let's have a break, and we'll return with questions for staff.
Okay.
Okay. Are our cost of... Wait, it doesn't make sense. The cost of... And the cost for... Who's the seventh?
That is the, um, at the, at the end of the day, if we receive all the grants, we reimbursements. And, you know, we, uh, you know, I assume that the, uh, channel, clear channel money is dedicated. Yes, it will be zero. And in fact, a little bit of change left.
Uh huh. Yeah, from my-
Yeah.
Based on my calculation, that sounds about right. Does that make sense to you, Mr. Berry?
Yeah.
Okay.
And what would be the trailing, uh, payment for the hundred thousand dollars from Clear Channel? What must happen for that to happen?
When they pull permits for the sign, um, I've spoken with the Clear Channel representative to find out the status. And my understanding is at the five freeway where they're doing widening, that it's a potential relocation site. And as soon as they settle that with Caltrans, they will pull permits and they've, they could go through plan check very quickly. And they're hopeful to do that by the end of the year.
Well, if they do not pull the permit by the end of the year?
If they don't pull it within the calendar year or within the fiscal year, then the general fund would, according to this, would be picking up the costs for the police services for the event and the, um, transportation study. That's the exposure, the eighty-six thousand dollar exposure. So the risk is whether Clear Channel doesn't go forward, then there wouldn't be that reimbursement, uh, for those costs.
Hmm. Okay, so that's-
Interesting.
Yeah, that's a large amount. Um, it's an interesting question, uh, if they don't pull the permits, depending upon Caltrans arrangement, et cetera. Because it's, it seems to me that, uh, has there been any promise made with Clear Channel?
I'm sorry?
Has there been any promise made? Because I, this is kind of assuming that we would approve those permits too, as a council.
I, I, I echo with you, Mayor, because I, I, as a city, I do not want to spend the money that we do not yet have. That, that's, that's the principle that we must adhere to. So if you're telling me that this money is not something that we are guaranteed that we have, because it depend on many things. You know, what if, uh, Clear Channel and, and the, you know, Caltrans doesn't work out and so they, they are delayed by another year? Or if they say, well, you know, I changed my mind, I don't want to do the bill bump anymore, then what would we do?
You know, and, uh, Councilmember, I totally agree with that. And that's why, you know, as I said earlier, I think the total appropriation here we're looking at, you know, based on the updates that we have is two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We are expecting to get reimbursements from the grants. I'm not counting the, uh, Clear Channel, because that's subject to a lot of conditions. But from what I've been, that's been communicated to me, the grants, those are issued. We have approvals. And, and I'm expecting that, uh, yes, okay, we will get those grants. And all, and some other sources that total a hundred and eighty-eight. Which then leaves that eighty-six thousand dollar exposure to the general fund. If we do get the Clear Channel money, it clears that up and leaves some change. But, uh, tonight, you know, to, you know, just the mechanism of paying for it and all of that, because even for the grants, we have to spend the money first and then get reimbursed. So the total appropriation that I, you know, uh, will be two seventy-five, three twenty-five.
I see. That's, and, and that's why you put a hundred and seventy-five, uh, as a budget, because you cannot count on the, the money from Clear Channel.
Well, it's actually the other way. That's a correction that I'm making, because the assumption initially was that it's a hundred and seventy-five, because the one hundred thousand was kind of assumed, you know, in. So you reduced it from two seventy-five to one seventy-five. So I'm making that correction for you tonight, to say the appropriation you need to be looking at is two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, not one seventy-five.
I don't want to commit two hundred and seventy-five on the money that we don't have.
Well, the, the one hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars of that, you ha- you will have.
Correct. But I still do not have the one hundred thousand dollars. That's a lot of money that you asked us to, to, you know, commit it to that we don't have.
Right. And, and I'm just saying the same thing. So the exposure, like I said, the exposure, ultimate exposure to the general fund is eighty-six thousand dollars. That's a decision that you have to make.
Mr. Roder. I'm sorry, give me one moment.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, when I introduced, uh, these items, I failed to provide you another option. As we noted, uh, the council can add one or all of these. Uh, but council also has the option to continue any one of these items. If you should so choose to request either clarification or additional information. These do not have to be approved or acted on tonight to be part of the budget. Uh, that is always the choice for you. If you want these brought back at a later date, that is always an option before you. If you need additional information, uh, or there are other points of clarification required. I just wanted to make sure you knew that that was a choice and that all these items were not necessarily either up or down, and that was the end of the conversation.
Sure. Well, for that one, I, I think it's, uh, it would be prudent for us to get more information and actually have it, you know, broken down for us. It, it would be nice to have Mayor Pretend Steve Jones here too, because I know he's been working on some of these grants with staff. Uh, so I know he has a better understanding of those. So I, I would be happy to continue, uh, the discussion after staff has more information on the Open Streets event. That's okay. And we can move on to the other ones, go down the list. Mr. Beard?
Uh, excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Could, could I ask that we have a, a motion second and a vote?
Oh, ac- actually, we need to conduct a public hearing.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So this is a question phase. Just finish up with that. So what I'm hearing from you is we do not have to include this in the appropriations part of the budget.
That's correct. You can come back and amend, you can come back and amend the budget later.
Yes, okay. Carry on with questions. The translation slash bilingual services, that's more as a needed basis. That's a twenty-five thousand dollar allotment for that, but it doesn't, we only use it as we need it, correct? And there's some pre arrangements done. If that service is needed, then they contact us and such. So, okay. Uh, transparency software, a question related to, um, that came up at our workshop, our, our transparency was an issue that we had at our retreat, let's call it that. And so, um, what's the total price, forty-five thousand? Where does that get us? That's what I'm wondering.
Well, that's the, uh, we, we are looking at two, um, uh, softwares. One is the Open Dove software, which is in process right now that we're implementing. And it does present, uh, budget data in a manner with pictures that are, you know, uh, the public can readily understand. Um, the second phase of it that we talked about is the Socrata. Socrata goes into a little bit more details and provides some other, you know, additional information that with, you know, in our opinion, could be complimentary to the-
Great. So just to ask more information to the public, it's on our website. Okay. Just a clarification. Uh, sixtieth anniversary celebration, question related to that. How much was it for the fiftieth anniversary celebration? Was it what? It was more than that, correct?
Yeah, it was several hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, this is scaled back, this is family oriented, and that's the whole-
Yeah. This money would be spent, um, on two things. One, a one-day event, maybe a community picnic, where we just have a band and maybe some blow-up bounce houses for kids and just for families to come down. Um, and then the other half of the money would be spent, um, on banners throughout the town that would be up for the entire year. Um, just kind of advertising the fact that we were having the sixtieth anniversary.
Okay, great.
But it's a much scaled-down version from the fiftieth.
All right. Can I, can you, okay, with the, uh, Veterans' War Memorial account? We can make that contingent upon the fifteen thousand dollars on, uh, we're working on a subcommittee, uh- Councilman Farner and I, we can, we can make that contingent, or we could approve that tonight, say, or include it in the budget, subject to, uh, using those funds based on the outcome results that we may have on our subcommittee.
Right. We would not draw those down until that decision is made on the subcommittee. That's correct.
And, uh, we're just going down the list. So the, and the mayor's aides, a new position, part-time position. And, uh, if the position doesn't get filled, we feel comfortable that the staff can absorb those duties and tasks and assignments.
Do we feel comfortable? We will do as we have always done, which is best of our ability to meet the needs and requests of all you as council members.
Okay. A tree planting, you heard about that. So that's going to be deferred. Okay? And Open Streets is just that. We're gonna, we've always, we can't vote on it to continue on a later date. Okay? Those are my questions. Thank you.
I would like to have, uh, more intel from the mayor as far as what will the aides role be and what the duties will be.
So in addition to the position being an outreach effort to engage youth in the community, to become involved in the city and undertaking community projects, uh, a lot of folks have come up to me and have expressed, especially more recently now that the students are back home and also out of school, that, uh, they'd like to see me work on bringing them and placing them into local businesses and volunteering and gaining experience rather than just, you know, hanging out for the summer. So I've actually had one of my interns identify some grants, et cetera, to help fund it, but, uh, it, it depends on whether we get those things or not. So primarily, the twenty-five thousand nine hundred twenty-three dollars is a part-time position, and it would support, uh, these organizing efforts.
And at this time, we have nothing in the city. Uh, Mr. Roder, though, we actually can support that? There's no means for the staff to do anything like that?
I, I can't say that we've, uh, identified resources. This is something the mayor came and talked about, the outreach effort. I think it is, uh, a little bit of a, a different function than what we traditionally, uh, provide in support of the council. It's not to say that there are not other models other than this to accomplish that. That simply isn't something we've looked into.
And so, Mr. Mayor, if we're willing to approve this, then will this be exactly and only the thing that the aide will do, that you specify? Or will it be basically under your watch or your mentorship that, um, which could possibly lead to other things that the aide will do that we're not aware of?
It's, it's very clear here in the justification of the request, um, disappointing document.
Uh huh. So that would be the, the extent?
Yeah.
And if we were to approve this, would this be a one-time approval? Or would this have to be, so I, you know, this, right?
Yeah, that's a good question. Yeah, that, that is addressed as well. Uh, this is something that, uh, could be an ongoing function, but because it is, you know, a new proposal, that this is like a trial. So it's a trial for a part-time basis. However, will this be, once we approve it, it'll be just going constantly? Or can we just have a one-year trial run, see how successful it is, and then come back and revisit that issue? That's what it is for this, um, this budget for fifteen sixteen.
I, Councilmember, uh, if you refer to the very bottom of the justification request, what it talks about is before this position is filled, that we establish some criteria and some policy direction, and that those be put into place. Then the position filled, so that you have objective criteria. First of all, so that individual has clear direction in terms of their role and function within your organization. And second of all, so that we have clear criteria by which to measure not only the effectiveness of that individual, but of the program itself. So that at this time next year, um, if you are to consider continuing the program, you can look at what, did this accomplish what the criteria we set forth valued? Uh, does it need to continue as part-time? Uh, does it need to be full-time? Would you be better served by to part-time instead of a full-time position? But you do need to establish criteria upfront before you can evaluate whether it's something you want long-term.
Right. I mean, I would, I'm leaning towards if they're supporting it. However, we'd like to see the criteria first and discuss it as a council, to see if something that we want to even do, and then we will approve the budget after. Would that be something that would make sense?
Uh, Councilmember, my recommendation would be that you approve the funding and the budget, but that filling the position, uh, would be subject to council, uh, approval of the policy and the criteria first. So that way you would have the appropriation in the budget to pay the position, but you would simply hold on filling it, uh, and actually recruiting it and appointing someone until you had the policy and the criteria presented to the council and approved.
And if we don't come to an agreement as far as what the criteria's are-
Then we don't spend.
We absorb back into the general fund, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
We still have time to deliberate, right? Because after the public hearing, then we deliberate and get our input before we-
Yes, right now, we're just having questions. So, any other questions? No? Okay. I'm going to open and conduct the public hearing now. I have three cards here. Dale Sefner?
Hello, Mayor. City Council. Uh, my name's Dale Sefner. I've lived in the city for, since nineteen sixty-four. And I'm now on the Parks and Recreation Commission. So, um, I sat through the three and a half hours of the workshop, one of the handful that did. And my concern was the fact that when we got done, we were still at a deficit, and everybody seemed to be very, how, very joyed that instead of losing eight million dollars last year, we're only losing four point four million dollars. And hope and luck is not a way to make a budget. As Commissioner Berry said, we can't spend money that we don't have. And in my conversations with my neighbors, and it's, how can the city continue budgeting a deficit? And now we're adding on new positions that we hadn't filled for years. And this is going to add more to the deficit instead of finally getting us out of debt. We're watching other cities go under because they can't pay their, their bills, basically. You know, it's like me hoping I'm gonna get raised, but I'll go, I'm gonna go out and buy a brand-new car, and I don't have the money yet. So that's one of my main concerns. And since I have your attention, another issue that's coming up is, it always comes this time of year. We're in a drought, and we're still selling fireworks. And I'm getting messages from the police department, the fire department, saying that, um, it's a thousand-dollar fine if you use illegal fireworks. We're selling the safe, insane ones. And we're watching all of our, our grass and everything dry up, and we're allowing people to go out and buy fireworks and put those on. So I have a concern about that. We're having to staff more fire department, more police, to go out to certain areas that are notorious for bad fireworks issues, and, um, so it's, it's an added expense also on top of that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Maureen Blackman.
I don't want to talk about anything. Good evening. Thank you for your time. I'm Maureen Blackman. I think I'm, I didn't, I missed the budget meeting, because I was at a festive occasion. My son got married. So as a parent, I always want to say yes, but I know that a lot of times you have to say no. And I didn't hear a lot of the details about the, um, staffing position, but I know it's almost impossible to get rid of a person once you hire him. We just did that at the company I'm working for, and it was two years of torture. But, um, I'd really like to see if there's a better way to handle it than hiring a new person. Is there a way to rearrange? I know at the war museum meeting, one of the staff members said she spends thirty percent of her time on that. So if she spent, if we can eliminate that problem, can't we reallocate, if it's not the money, the staff? There has to be somebody on staff that can help with that. I'm just love the idea. I just hate the idea of hiring somebody at a point where we're four point five million dollars. I know Kinsey, I wouldn't want to be in his shoes when he keeps saying one point five, one point nine. We know those are millions, not dollars. I'm very reluctant to approve any kind of a budget. Like I said, maybe I'm a curmudgeon today, but I'm not in the mood to spend money when we don't have it. That's why I'm painting paint on my house. I really don't want to be in the position to do it, and I'm super reluctant about hiring somebody. I'd like to see budgeted some other way. I could forego a sixtieth birthday party and a street event if it saved us half, quarter of a million dollars, just my position at the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Adrian Helm? That's the last card I have, so if there are any other members that'd like to comment?
Mayor, City Council. I'm Adrian Helm. And my concern is just like the other two citizens said. How can we be spending money that we don't have? Is it really necessary to have that Open Streets event with the hope that we're going to get a hundred thousand dollars from the Clear Channel? I agree with Councilman Fat Berry. We should not be spending money and planning for things when we're not sure that we're going to have the money to actually cover that event. And I agree with Maureen as far as even a birthday party for the city. I'm sure there could be another way that could be celebrated, that we don't have to spend fifty thousand dollars. I mean, we all have to budget our own families and our own lives, and we can't go out and buy things if we can't afford to pay for them. They'll come repossess your car. You know, let's be serious here. Let's try to get a balanced budget wisely. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Seeing and hearing no others, I'm going to close the public hearing. And at this time, member, uh, Madam Clerk, any protests received regarding the proposed? I'm sorry, that's something else. Okay, number discussion on everything we've heard.
Okay. So do we, are we going one by one, or we can talk on any item that we're concerned with?
We can, you know, I think, you know, that was a question.
Uh, on the trans- translation bilingual services, uh, I do agree that we, you know, we, we do have a need for translation when, you know, other members of our city come and they do not speak English well. However, uh, that's a nice to have. And we are having, uh, you know, very difficult deficit that we need to balance. So I would, I would feel uncomfortable to allocate up to twenty-five thousand for that services at this time. You know, perhaps in the future, when we have, you know, more financials, uh, you know, um, budget, uh, then, then we would bring it back and then we would use it. But for now, to even consider that in the budget, I don't, I, I think it's very inappropriate for us. So I would, I would feel uncomfortable about, you know, approving that, that, uh, budgetary item. Uh, as far, and again, on the transparency software. Now, I, I totally support the, uh, you know, open government and the need for transparency. But again, uh, it is a, you know, urgent, uh, you know, needed services that we, we have to provide to our resident. I do want, I do want to offer, uh, you know, to use the software to, uh, you know, promote, uh, open government and transparency and allow our resident to, to have access to them. But at this point, I think there are many other items that are much more, uh, you know, higher priority. For example, graffiti. We have graffiti throughout the, uh, the city. We just heard last, as the last city council meeting, a gentleman come and crying about, uh, graffiti that, that, you know, spreading throughout that, uh, his properties. And there's no one to come to clean up or to enforce it, because we do not have enough code enforcement. Uh, and, um, as far as the Vietnam World Museum, the reason I brought it back to the council and suggest that we look into it, because I, I, I do not see the hope that it go anywhere. If it doesn't go anywhere, then we should not spend a dime on it. If it go somewhere, we have a hope for it. I, I love to have the Vietnam World Museum, but if it doesn't go anywhere, I wouldn't want to spend even a dime, you know, not alone fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, as far as the mayor aides, I have a big problem with this. Throughout sixty years of our city, we never have a mayor aide. And, uh, we do have, we already have a full-time secretary. You know, dedicated solely for the mayor and for the council to use. And in addition to that, we have the full city staff at our disposal to do things that we need them to research for us. Why on earth now we need another, another aide for us? Of course, I would like to have it, you know, but it's something that we do not have, um, you know, a strong need for them. Um, and I, I can't keep wondering, uh, you know, we are elected officer, we are elected to, to be a public servant. We, we are here because we want to volunteer our times to serve the city. We are not here as a, a celebrity that, that we need, you know, entourage to follow us here and then and, and speak for us. We are capable of communicating and advocating, uh, on behalf of our resident. We do not need someone else to, to advocate that for us. We do not need someone to advocate to the youth to get, to join to our city, um, event. And, and even if we do, that position need to be a volunteer position, just like the planning commissioners, the order commissioners that we have. They are all volunteer. They put in a lot of their time. They've even put in the money as they spend to drive around checking property and this and that. This shouldn't be a paid position. This should be solely a volunteer position. And I would welcome the student to, to volunteer to become a mayor aide, the mayor aide. And they could learn from that experience. Those experience will help them advance in their career. Uh, and then, uh, another couple more points. Our city is facing a very large deficit, six million dollars, maybe more. We do not know yet. It all depend on the contract negotiation. It could even go up to ten million dollars. And, uh, a few years ago, when we, when we faced the economy, uh, downturn, we used to have four court enforcing, uh, enforcing staff. We now reduce to one. And I keep sitting here at the city council hearing that, well, we cannot do that because we don't have enough court enforcement staff. Crime is growing up. And we heard our, uh, our chief saying that crime grows substantially. We need more police officer. Uh, our, uh, human resource department are rife under staff. We should put focus on filling the position, not creating something that, that would be a nice to have. Um, and as far as a community outreach, that this position was supposed to, uh, to be for, we do have a fully staffed community services that are under the management by Mrs. Kim Hoey over there. And she do a great job. Why do we need someone else to do that job for her? So I really don't understand this at all. And I would like to remind you, Mayor, uh, Maureen, on October seventeen, two thousand fourteen, on an interview with, uh, with the Orange County Register, you said that we should be very careful, careful about spending, um, uh, the taxpayer money. I see this as a wasteful taxpayer money that we, that we committed to. And so I would like, I would hope that you would, uh, would keep your promise during your campaign and, and withdraw your request for this. Thank you.
Okay. I think that there's some misunderstanding on what the position entails, since we don't have a description for it in detail that needs to be approved by the council. But, you know, I've, I've heard everyone speak, and it's, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars, and we shouldn't spend money we don't have. I hear that. I know that staff does a great job, and I appreciate everybody that works in our city, especially, uh, the folks that work directly with the public. And the intention is, is not to, um, have anyone following me around or anything like that. I, I don't need that. Uh, the intention was to serve the interests of the public in terms of having something for the kids to do. And it is different than a commissioner job, because a commissioner job, uh, commissioners- job, commissioners meet not so often. So there isn't that continuity. I don't want to broaden staff further. I know staff is already doing a lot as it is. So, you know, it's something that, you know, is not really a need, and I understand that. So I'm really happy to strike that from the proposal. Regarding the translation bilingual services, I think that is a need in our community. It's been expressed by our public that not only does the public need to be able to express themselves and for us to understand, but also for the public to understand us. And there's been problems due to a lack of interpreting services already. And that, like Mr. Beard said, is to budget for these. I don't think that is something that is negotiable as a service. Transparency software, Socrata, I have spoken with our IT director, and OpenGov would be very helpful. Folks can see how we spend our money. We're going to put our financials online. Socrata does much more than that. But at this time, we can wait. The sixty year anniversary celebration, I don't remember the fifty year anniversary celebration, really, to be honest. I'm going to leave that there for a second. For the Vietnam or Vietnam World Museum of America Foundation, it seems like over the years, a lot has been spent already, and we haven't really made strides. It's a great idea. It really is. You know, I think as elected officials or those that want to serve the public in these positions, we reflect on history, but oftentimes, it's not something that is available for the public to go to. I think the museum's a great idea, but at this time, I'm definitely not comfortable spending money that we don't have. And the public has spoken on that. So going down the list, we're just crossing off pretty much everything. I'd love to celebrate, you know, our sixtieth anniversary. Maybe we can do it another way. Potluck style, city, kind of garden park. I'm kidding. There's probably some health code violations there. But I think for me, the world, you know, negotiable to run a city is the translation bilingual services. I can't imagine in such a diverse city that we can't understand each other, especially to operate government and to hear from the public. So to me, that's the only necessary thing, really, if you're talking about needs and wants. And it's, you know, I'm glad you're keeping me accountable. I encourage you to do that. We can see what just your article.
And the twenty-five thousand is actually just the maximum that we're using to this. So if for the, through the year, we only need them for once or twice, then you're talking about a few thousand dollars and nowhere near the twenty-five thousand, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I would agree with the mayor on that one. So, you know, I would support that. So would you, maybe we just want to go down the list and say before Yorone?
You know, at this time, I really want to have staff have a full opportunity to bring back the open streets with all that other information, because, you know, it's only fair. And then I'm glad that the tree planting program has already been pulled. I pulled the mayor's aide. It sounds like we don't have any consensus for the Vietnam World Museum of America Foundation. It sounds like, you know...
Sixtieth is going to be pulled, right?
Sixtieth is going to be pulled, transparency software.
Yep.
So translation's the only one.
Well, I have another question. Translation service, how do we come up with twenty-five thousand to be estimate? So many times that we would be using the service throughout the fiscal year? My question is, can we lower to ten thousand dollars, just to get an idea how much it would be as a compromise to see how much we...
Sure, of course, of course we could. But just to answer your question, we looked at several cities surrounding us and what they were paying for their services. So one example is the city of Santa Ana had entered into a contract with translation services for thirty thousand dollars for one year. They had a much larger city, and we just thought that twenty-five thousand dollars for a one-year pilot program contract not to exceed that amount, and, you know, whatever we needed of that, if it was a couple thousand, it would cover that.
Okay.
So we could lower it.
Okay. At this time, could I, if I understand the process we may want to use, make a motion to include the translation slash bilingual services for ten thousand dollars added to the budget to be voted on in the package?
Yeah.
I'll move that?
No, I really like to keep the twenty-five thousand since staff has already done the analysis and comparison, and that's something that's needed. If we don't, you know, spend all our money, then of course, we still have it. So I'd rather keep it so that we don't, you know, get into trouble later on. Mr. Okuriki, did you have any comment?
Just updated information here. The IT director just pointed out to me that for the transparency software, it's actually a combination of, because we implemented the OpenGov this year. Next year, there's twenty thousand dollars for the OpenGov to continue that. So this forty-five thousand is for both. So at a minimum, we want to keep twenty thousand dollars of that to continue the OpenGov.
Can you elaborate that again? Why? Because we already spent the twenty-five thousand?
No, no. Twenty-five thousand dollars for next fiscal year. It's, I'm assuming, you know, licensing fee and all of that for the OpenGov that we've already acquired this in the current fiscal year to continue that. We think it would require at least, I mean, the IT director can speak more to that, but, you know, twenty thousand is for OpenGov and the balance is for Socrata. We can postpone that part of it, but twenty thousand dollars, I think we need as a minimum.
Yeah, twenty thousand dollars in annual fee for OpenGov. There was some setup fees for this year, but for the most part, it's like software as a service, so it's twenty thousand dollars every year. The forty-five thousand would have allowed us to do both. So it would have been twenty thousand for OpenGov, twenty-five thousand more for Socrata. So what our finance director is saying is that we need at least twenty thousand to continue to utilize OpenGov for the next fiscal year.
Oh, I see. So this is a recurring cost, twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars a year for software licenses, annual software licenses and support.
Right.
Yeah, that's something that the public has expressed that they wanted, and it's something that engages the public in the process. In fact, what we're doing here today is a interactive that folks can do with that software from their own home so that they can be all educated. So next time, next year, when we have a vote on the budget, this room will be packed, and hopefully there'll be an overflow room as well, and our hearing would not be only a few speakers. And that's something that I promised during the campaign, and I'm delighted, Mr. Berry. So, yeah, you're welcome. So that is something that folks want, and that's something that we need to further engage people.
Okay. If we already purchased the Socrata, and then I would think that we would want to, you know, keep that. And so I would feel comfortable with a twenty thousand dollar a year's budget?
Yes, and I believe you mean OpenGov. We've purchased OpenGov.
Oh, we opened, okay, OpenGov. So, okay, so we would put a twenty thousand annual, you know, fee for that?
Yes.
Okay. So with that, then we change it forty-five to twenty then?
Correct. So what I've heard so far is twenty-five thousand for the transparency, which is specifically OpenGov translation. If it's okay with you, Mr. Beard, I'd like to keep it at twenty-five, as staff have done their research. I know, because you mentioned lowering it to ten.
Well, I just think we haven't had the service in the past, so it's not, I wouldn't gauge it to go the full twenty-five thousand if we've never used it before. So I'd say the compromise would be ten. So, but my motion failed. That's a decision for the council.
I would second that motion to keep that at ten.
Okay. Since we have a motion and a second, please vote on the translation bilingual services to be included in the budget at ten thousand.
Motion received three yes votes with councilmember Phan voting no.
Okay. I compromise. It makes sense though, either way, you know.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, if we find that there is substantial demand for translation services, and we say halfway through the fiscal year, find that we are going to meet or exceed this appropriation, we will come back and advise you as council.
Sure.
Because clearly, if there's that kind of demand for the service, you as a council will likely want to continue it, and will need to come back with the budget amendment. So I don't want you, in trying to be prudent making that reduction, think that once we hit that limit, we are just going to cut off the service any more than we do with other services directly to the public.
Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify.
We absolutely expect that. You know, the interesting thing is that it's within the city manager's authority to make expenditures of up to fifty thousand dollars. And it's so interesting that here as councilmembers, that we are, you know, kind of bickering amongst each other, filing over these items, you know, and going over this with a fine-toothed comb, which I think is great. I think that's fine. But you know, the reality is, this is a new day, and that's why we're doing it.
Mr. Mayor, just a reminder, even though the city manager has fifty thousand dollar expenditure authority, I am only authorized to expend that which is in the budget.
Right.
Absolutely.
So are we going to wait completely with the sixty year celebration, or are we going to come to a smaller compromise and at least do something to remind folks that we've been around for sixty years?
Yeah. Is this discussion time on this side?
Yeah.
I want to propose keeping the fifty thousand dollars, and it's a significant reduction from the fiftieth anniversary. I think it represents Garden Grove. I think it's a time for celebration. It does bring all elements, all diversity, all parts of Garden Grove together. Last fiftieth anniversary is fifty years of hometown pride. I think we need to express that every decade or so as a city, as part of our culture, part of our history, time to celebrate. I think the employees, just as much as the residents, celebrated the city of Garden Grove in the fiftieth anniversary. So I think it's totally appropriate. It's a cultural, educational event for the community. So it's Garden Grove. It's our roots, and we get a chance to be proud and express that. And so it only happens every ten years. Some people may see it as a luxury in these tough times, but it also, we are a city, and I think we should be recognized for our sixty years of hometown pride coming up. So that's my, it doesn't have to be elaborate. I think it'd be simple, family-oriented. The picnic ideas, I think is a wonderful idea. So I think any type of planning on these events takes staff times, takes time, takes money. Just advertise it, takes effort and expense. So I think fifty thousand dollars would cover it, and that's why I'm supportive of that. If you come up with a lower number, I'm supportive of an anniversary celebration. Now, the question is probably the dollar amount.
That's less than a dollar per resident. Break it down.
We have the strawberry festival every year, and so I think it's time to recognize the city every decade. So I'm proud of it, and I want to express that to all the citizens. I think they like to come out too and enjoy their city and feel a part of the city. I think it does wonders for us as a community.
So it's a one-time event for fifty thousand dollars?
And I might add, the city of Costa Mesa, how much do they spend that one year? Does not go there, okay.
Councilmember Plaim.
Mr. Berry doesn't answer that question.
That was after my time. I'm not an authoritative source on that subject.
Okay, okay. Would you like to motion, sir?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? I'll second that, just to entertain it. Please vote.
Motion received three yes votes with Mayor Nguyen voting no.
All right. So we haven't voted on the Socrata, the OpenGov yet, have we?
No.
No.
Okay. So I'll move that twenty thousand to continue the OpenGov?
I second it.
Please vote.
Motion received four yes votes.
Okay. And we can, since the others have been removed, we don't have to consider them.
Are we going to do continuing of the open streets event?
Yes, yes, we're continuing.
We haven't voted on it yet.
Are we continuing both open street and the Vietnam World Memorial?
Could we? I'd like to continue that, the World Memorial.
Yeah, I think we continue discussing the Vietnam World Memorial, but I don't, I do not see the need to spend money on it, you know. I do not know if we continue discussing it, do we need to spend money on it? Can stop elaborating there? Can?
We, can we continue to discuss it without spending money? Yes.
Okay. Then I would like to continue discussing it without spending money on it.
But that's also staff time, which is money. That's the part of the continuing.
Well, of course, but, you know, staff time is already paid for in the general funds. You know, we're here, we're talking about additional money on top of that. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, but as the public had already said earlier too, which I agree with, that time could be spent doing other things.
Right. So what I'm saying here is we do not approve the additional fifteen thousand for that, for that project, you know. And I'm only referring to the additional money here.
The annual contribution, okay.
Yeah. And I think that we had said that we will wait till the subcommittee comes back with a recommendation, and then we'll decide on any additional funding at that time. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. Well, in that case, would my colleagues in the team moving that so that we can strike it out, this fifteen thousand proposal?
Continue, continue you mean?
No, no, to not allow that fifteen thousand to be budgeted.
Right.
That would require a vote.
So we're not even going to bring back for consideration our discussions?
They have for consideration, but in terms of budgeting for the future, that's a different discussion. Right now, what's on the table is whether we want to make this fifteen thousand dollar contribution.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Okuriki?
Yeah, I think just additional information before you vote on that, the fifteen thousand is actually additional appropriation that we're asking for. There's ten thousand dollars already in the budget that's been given to the Memorial One Museum.
The foundation.
Past a couple of years. So the proposal is actually to increase it to twenty-five, from ten to twenty-five, and this fifteen is the additional request.
Yes. Just to clarify that, we have been giving twenty-five every year. It's just that in previous years, ten thousand of that was coming from the general fund, and fifteen thousand was coming from cultural arts. There is no longer sufficient money in cultural arts to be able to pay for that. And so this fifteen thousand is just basically saying that the entire twenty-five would be coming from the general fund.
Oh, wow. Okay. Well, I'm definitely not okay with that. And in fact, I would like the ten thousand to stop too. I want zero coming out of the general fund to this foundation. You know, it's a great idea, but we've heard from the public, and we haven't seen, you know, much movement based on staff report in terms of their fundraising ability either. So I see no reason to support it in any way from our general fund. Because now, because now we're talking about reducing the bilingual services where we know that's a real need, but this is, this is an idea in the clouds.
Just a reminder, we are, we are, we are a subcommittee looking into this right now. And so, I mean, to limit the money is okay, but I feel more appropriate if we do appropriate the money, and then we can act on it if we do whatever decisions we sign as a, as a subcommittee bringing forth recommendations, or where we might go with the, with the museum. So it's a question still to be answered. There's more information to be found out, and maybe it could go into a different direction. I don't know. We're still meeting it as a subcommittee. So I would see, I'd see it appropriate to have the appropriation still in there. If we use it, we use it. If we don't, we don't.
Well, my issue is not that there hasn't been any decision on that particular foundation. The issue is that we know that money has been coming from the general fund to this foundation, where currently none of us sit on that board. foundation where currently none of us sit on that board. As city council members, doesn't that concern us? Well, we're representing the public and we're allowing the appropriation of public general fund dollars to a foundation that does not have a seat of the public representative there?
Well, we no longer have a seat and membership, but we do ask the city council to donate or donate money to the foundation, and there's always opportunity to have board members on there as well.
I think from a legal, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, Mr. Nixon, from a legal perspective, we can vote to appropriate money, there's no conflict of interest there, correct?
That's correct.
So the question would be, you know, do we want to allocate the fund to see if the committee decide to move and the resident decide to move forward, or we would take the money back and waiting for that decision to be yes or no, if it is yes, then we would consider an amendment to the budget. Is that, is that, that could be a way to go, right?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
So I think it's just coming down to, you know, we have a committee to decide whether we would, you know, move forward with that project or not moving forward with that project, and why that committee is still studying that with the public. The $25,000 that we had been promised to donate to that foundation, do we want to stop that, or we want to wait until the committee conclude, you know, their study?
That's a good question, I think we should stop it. I think, you know, once the committee comes back, we can decide there, but, you know, this is what's on the table now and we need to decide.
I think you're already prejudging what our decision is going to be with the committee. No, no, I'm... What I'm saying is there's, the allotment is there, but we wouldn't act on it or spend any of that money until we make a decision amongst the council where we're headed with the museum.
But if, if we hadn't made the promise to donate this money to, to the foundation, I would not feel comfortable in, you know, put that on the budget. But since we, we made that as a, you know, as a city, we made that, that promise to them. So unless we finish and conclude the, you know, the study by the subcommittee and decided that we, in one way or the other, I would, I would probably leaning toward, you know, put that on the budget, understanding that within a short timeframe, maybe a couple months, no more than that, right? We would know the answer yes or no to, to the question on whether that will be continued or not, and if that is not continued, then we would, you know, seemingly take that, that fund back. We are not, we are not paying into that, that organization, right? This is just budgetary purposes.
Correct, we would not draw down on this money until a decision has been made by the council.
Okay.
On the, you know, continued funding of the foundation.
So with that, our respect for the subcommittee that I, that I had, you know, asked you guys to, to study this at the previous council, I would, I would, you know, our respect, I would, you know, still keep the budget and wait for your study in the season, or recommendation, I mean.
So is that a motion that you're making?
Yes, and I'll second that.
And the motion is specifically for a $15,000 amount in addition to the $10,000, which comes out to be $25,000?
That's correct, because that's the amount that we appropriated to them, right?
Well, you know, that's, has that been some discussion? Is that something that we've committed to the foundation?
No, we do not, well, we have given them $25,000 a year since their inception, but we do not have a legal binding document that states that we owe them the money every year. It's just an annual decision on behalf of the council.
Thank you. And am I correct that the property where that museum, proposed museum is supposed to be is actually in city, is city property, or city is leasing that?
Yes.
It's a city property, yes.
It's city property?
It's city property, yes.
So, okay. So that's, that's actually an asset for us, and this Vietnam War Museum of America Foundation idea is possibly holding back on use, for use or a different idea of what that would be as well, right?
Well, there is no current agreement with the foundation that they have any promise to the property, so there is nothing happening with the foundation that is preventing the city from selling that property or bringing in any other kind of development there.
Right.
Okay.
Currently.
I'm sorry. And the foundation currently has how many members and who are they?
They currently have eight board members and about seven honorary board members. So they have a board of about 15.
Who are the board members that were on the city council or from the city?
The previous city council members who were on the board were Bruce Broadwater and Dana Wynn. Bruce Broadwater has resigned from the committee or from the foundation, and Dana is still a member of the foundation, just as a private citizen. So there is room obviously on the board, if the council would like to appoint one or more members to be on that board, they could certainly speak to the foundation and ask that that occur.
Yes. You know, the challenge here for me is that a foundation's board is, I think their main responsibility is to raise money, and we haven't seen that. I've, I've attended, you know, one event in the past for, for that foundation, and as it is now, I don't see the ability for that foundation to really raise money. So I, I'm not comfortable being this, really the sole donor. As I say, we would be the sole donor to this foundation, doesn't that concern you?
No, I think, I think they, they do raise money, right? They raise not a lot of money, but they do raise like 100 or so, thousand, a couple hundred thousand dollars?
They, they have, on their own, they've raised about $90,000 on their own, and then the rest has come from the city of Garden Grove. And, I mean, it really is, in terms of museums and in terms of foundations, it really is in its infancy as a foundation.
Right.
I mean, the first couple of years they've spent just kind of creating themselves and getting their nonprofit status in line, so it takes time to actually build your board and to do that. And I think they realize that that's something that they would have to do to be able to continue, and that's something that a financial feasibility study looked at, that they'd have to really grow that board, and so they're working on doing that, but again, it takes time, so.
I, I, the reason I bring that, this back up to the city focus is because I see the lack of performance on the board, and I believe that the board, you know, with the member that, that they currently have, it probably would not be, there probably would not be a good prospect that they can raise a lot of money, but, but there is a potential, and that's why I would like the subcommittee to, to talk to them and, and let them know that in order for this project to move forward, they need to bring, you know, good board member in that can raise a lot of money, and there are tons of them out there. There are a lot of Vietnam War era veterans who are very successful, who are millionaires, and, you know, there could, there are even a millionaire out there that if they can tap into, then this project would take off the round. But they need to get those people in, in the board, you know?
Yes.
Any organization such as the Red Cross, the Boy Scout, they get successful people in the board so that they can move and raise the money, and if these people realize that they have been, you know, on the low end of our Y, then they need to do that and, and do that quickly, and I hope that will happen. But if that doesn't happen, then we will, you know, say, well, good idea, but maybe we wait for another times and, and another place to do this.
Right. And I, just to kind of finalize this discussion, I believe that on July 27, the subcommittee is going to be meeting again, and I believe that the foundation is going to be proposing two or three options to move forward, and so we should be able to, I think, return with a report sometime in August to the council as to, you know, an option that the subcommittee wants to bring forward.
I would like to ask you another, you know, side question related to this. I understand that there is another business that, you know, residing, you know, staying at these properties. Do they pay for, for the portion of the building that they are using?
Yes, there is a lease agreement in place, and it is based on, and I'm not sure if Kingsley wants to add in here, but it is actually based on a lease structure that refunds them on a monthly basis against money that they have put toward the building.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. You know, we're spending a lot of time on this and comparative to the rest of the budget. There's a motion, I want to, you know, stop discussion, even though personally I feel that a museum during a time of budget deficit is a bad idea in general. I think it's kind of like, you know, when you have a lot of money, it's something you want to do, but there's been a motion, there's been a second on that one, and it's $15,000, please vote.
Motion received three yes votes with Mayor Wynn voting no.
Okay, so, and then we're going to continue the Open Street discussion, right? Okay. Let's move along, oh, sorry. That's right, okay, we had the public speak, wasn't very many of you. Twenty A one. Oh, that's all, that's everybody? That's all of them in one action? No, no, we just did those, we just did the proposed basic budget that was in front of us. So we still have the remaining resolutions, and I need to adjourn the motion for twenty A, which includes twenty A one through twenty A six. Six. I made a motion to approve.
Second it.
Is there any discussion? Staff is ready to answer questions, they just came in.
Actually, they came in for twenty B.
Okay. No discussion on that? Okay, please vote.
Motion received four yes votes.
The next item, public hearing item is a resolution establishing an amending user fees, and, and Ifor from the finance department is here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight you have before you a resolution to amend the city's master fee schedule. In 1994, the city council adopted a master fee schedule which combined the city's fees for service into one document. The city strives to recover most, if not all, of the costs for such services. The document has been updated periodically as needed. Staff has studied the current fee schedule and identified the following fees for adjustment. These changes include the addition of a fire flow testing fee, the addition of deposits for construction water meters, additions and minor changes to various facility rental charges, and the deletion of fees for passport services and hazardous materials disclosure as the, as the city no longer provides services. As required by the government code, a public hearing notice was published and the proposed fee changes and cost documentation were made available for the 10-day public review period at the city clerk's office. If approved, the new fees will become effective July 1st, 2015. It is estimated that the addition of the proposed fees will recover approximately $9,500 per year, depending upon the level, depending upon the level and nature of services provided. It is recommended that the city council conduct a public hearing and adopt the attached resolution establishing and amending user fees for various city services. Staff is available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? None? I want to open the public hearing. Any cards, any members of the public hearing and seeing none, or close the public hearing? There a motion?
Good question, are these, are these fees already included in the next year's budget?
No, they're not.
No. Okay.
I entertain the motion.
So moved?
Second.
Please vote.
Motion received four yes votes.
Thank you, twenty C, please.
This next public hearing is regarding the Garden Grove Tourism Improvement District, and Greg Brodget is here to present that report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Purpose of this report is to hold a public hearing and adopt the resolution confirming the annual report of the Garden Grove Tourist Improvement District, also known as GG TID, for fiscal year 2015, 2016. Before we can assess, assessments can be levied, the city council must conduct a public hearing to hear and consider any and all protest, levying of assessment. After tonight's public hearing, the city council may take one of the following actions: terminate the proceedings if there is a majority protest, order changes in the annual report, or adopt the proposed resolution. It is recommended at this time the city council conduct a public hearing for the proposed annual levy of assessment and other matters provided in the annual report submitted by the GG TID advisory report, receive the report from the city clerk regarding protests received, and assuming no majority protest, adopt the attached resolution. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? None? I want to open the public hearing. No cards hearing and seeing none? Do we close it? City clerk report, please.
As of the close of the public hearing, we have received no protest, therefore there's no majority protest.
Thank you, is any member discussion? I entertain a motion to approve? I'll make the motion.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion received four yes votes.
Here next to him, please.
The next public hearing item is regarding municipal code amendment amending Title 14 regarding water conservation, and Bill Murray, the public works director, is here to provide that report.
Thank you, Ms. Baylor. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, council is being asked to introduce and conduct a first reading of an ordinance to amend the water conservation program ordinance to comply with the governor's executive order declaring a state of emergency and mandatory water conservations. On April 21st of 2015, the governor issued mandatory water conservation measures that modified, that were modified and approved by the state Water Resources Control Board, and those went into effect on May 9th. Those specific measures that are applied to the, to our ordinance are to restrict water use on the ratepayers or by the ratepayers to achieve a 28% reduction, to prohibit outdoor irrigation during and within 48 hours following immeasurable rainfall. Restaurants are prohibited from serving water unless asked for. Hotels and motels must offer their guests the option of not having towel laundered daily, or their towels laundered daily. Agencies must impose restrictions on outdoor irrigation, limiting water days, or watering days. So with those, the, the new conservation measures, hang on one second, are as follows. Let's see if I can get this thing to go down.
I think folks got an email on that the other day.
Restrict watering during and within 48 hours of the rain, to restrict irrigation to only two days a week for water conservation stage two and three, to revise the limits on watering to permit watering before 10:00 AM and after 5:00 PM. We want to revise the restriction on ornamental fountains or structures to allow their use as long as the water is recirculated. This will apply to stage one and stage two. And to include a conservation measure such that hotels must provide customers the option of not having towels and rooms laundered daily. For the record, the title of the ordinance is Ordinance Amending Title 14 of the Garden Grove Municipal Code to Comply with the Governor's Emergency Water Conservation Mandate. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available should you have any questions.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just briefly, I'm, I'm sorry, the, the actual reading of the ordinance title, for whatever reason, didn't track what's on the ordinance itself, so if I, if I may.
Please.
It's an ordinance of the city council of the city of Garden Grove amending Chapter 40 of Title 14 of the Garden Grove Municipal Code to reflect recent changes in state law regarding water conservation.
Perfect. And this requires a public hearing, right?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Any questions for staff before I open up the public hearing?
I have one question on page number, page number three. At the bottom, the bottom paragraph, limit on watering hours, it said here on the last sentences, except by use of a hand water set of nozzle or device or for a very short period of time for the express purpose of adjusting or repairing an irrigation system. What do you mean by short?
Well, what it is, is to allow repairmen to fix your sprinklers and such that they're not just allowing water to run down the street, so that we want to provide repairmen the opportunity to repair an irrigation system, but it isn't, what we want to make sure that they do it in a water-saving manner.
Any others? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. Anybody? Okay. Thanks for still being here. Closing the public hearing. Anytime a motion? Second, please vote.
Motion received, four yes votes.
Okay, items for consideration, we're twenty-one A.
Twenty-one A is approval of a city manager employment agreement with Scott C. Stiles, and Janie Lee is here from the Human Resources Department.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as you may recall, we previously brought forth a proposed employment agreement.
For Mr. Scott C. Stiles at the June eleventh nineteen, twenty fifteen special meeting, but no action was taken at that time. To refresh your memory, the agreement provides an annual salary of two hundred and fifty-six thousand, and the benefits consistent with other members of central management. We're requesting that the employment agreement submitted be approved and to authorize the mayor to sign this agreement on behalf of the city. I'm available for any comments.
Okay. Is there a move to approve?
I move it.
Second, please vote.
Motion received, four yes votes.
Twenty-one B.
Do you want to talk?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I will excuse myself from chambers on this next item.
I'm sorry, why, why is that, sir?
Twenty-one A one is an amendment to the agreement with Alan Roder as our city manager.
Oh, okay, I see. I just skipped the twenty-one B. Thank you.
And Janie Lee is here to present that report.
Me again.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, brought forth is a proposed amendment to employment agreement with Mr. Roder for services as interim city manager. The extension agreement allows Mr. Roder to continue to serve as the interim city manager until Mr. Stiles starts employment on August third, twenty fifteen. After August third, Mr. Roder will be working on an as-needed basis to ensure smooth transition until September thirtieth, twenty fifteen. The compensation will remain the same. We're requesting that the amendment to the employment agreement for Alan Roder be approved and to authorize the mayor to sign this agreement on behalf of the city. I'm available for any questions or comments.
Motion? Move approval? Second, please vote. Okay, now twenty-one B.
Motion received, four yes votes. Okay, I'm just looking back. Twenty-one B is a letter contract to Interlog Corporation regarding the remodel of the Garden Grove Community Meeting Center, and Janet Pyle is here to provide that report.
Okay, great, great.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. I want to give you guys a little bit of background, just to kind of go over the project. In the City Council study session on June tenth, twenty fourteen, staff presented information regarding a conceptual design to remodel the community meeting center. At the time, we were asked to go and look for an architect, which we did, and in August of twenty fourteen, we contracted with LPA, and we worked on the plans for the remodel of the CMC. On April twenty-nine, twenty fifteen, we opened up the invitations for bids, and we received a total of seven bids. At this time, what I would like to ask is for council to authorize to enter into a contract with Interlog Corporation. The contract would allow them to do the base bid as well as the six alternate items that were part of the invitation for bids. The total contract amount is eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars, which we have in our current budget under capital improvements.
Okay.
If you have any questions, I can answer them.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question. So, King, in, uh, I've got projections, which is good.
Yes.
So, can we use the extra money for furnishings? That's my question.
No. Since this is part fee funds that we'll be using to do the improvements, we're not allowed to purchase any furniture with those funds.
Okay, but any additional alterations or improvements or, to the building we can use it for?
Yes. So what we would like to do with the, the additional funds is come back with a phase two, which will be the chamber, and hopefully be able to dedicate those funds and if needed additional funds so that we can also make the improvements in this room.
Okay.
Mr. Roder? You look like you wanted to say something.
No, Mr. Mayor, other than the fact that we are in these chambers making only the most minimal of ADA improvements, and I want to make sure the council and the public understood that those will not be completed, and there is obviously significantly more work that needs to be done in these chambers.
Okay, great.
Another question. Sir, Mayor, with the construction, how long is the projected to be?
We have designated in the contract a hundred and ten working days. So hopefully, if we can begin construction in end of July, August, we might be done December, January.
So, and this will affect the operation of those council chambers, we'll also have to move to an alternate location during that time?
For some of the meetings, we, we may need to move. Once we have the contractor on board, we'll have pre-construction, and we'll determine which, at which time during the construction period we'll have to move these meetings. But at this time, the way we worded the contract was that we would continue to have City Council and some of our commission meetings in this chamber during the construction if, if it was possible, so.
What's the alternate? Portyard or something like that?
Oh, sorry. We'll probably move it to the senior center, actually. It's the most cost-effective way that we could continue to televise the meetings and still have the meetings within the facility.
Okay.
Not have to hire a satellite truck.
Okay, oh, good.
Yeah.
Any motion? Move approval? Second, please vote.
Motion received, four yes votes.
Twenty-one C.
The twenty-one C is a letter contract to Geo Group for jail booking and security services, and Chief Todd Elgin is here for that report.
Nope.
Nope. Whoops. Sorry.
Lost your hair there, she.
Took, I didn't look this time.
I'm Captain Travis Whitney. Good evening, Mayor Wynn and members of the council. I'm here this evening to obtain City Council approval to award a contract to Geo Group Incorporated to provide twenty-four hour jail booking and security services for the police department. The police department has contracted such services from Geo Group, formerly CSI, since two thousand, and Geo Group has demonstrated an excellent performance history. The current contract is scheduled to expire on June thirtieth of this year, and a formal request for proposal, or RFP, was completed to evaluate other jail service companies that chose to participate in the selection process. The RFP was posted on the city's website on April eighth, twenty fifteen, and the final bids were due on May eighth. Two jail services companies, Geo Group and G4S Security Solutions, successfully completed the RFP process. The evaluation criteria and scoring weights consisted of price at thirty percent, project plan at thirty-five percent, and proposal requirements at thirty-five percent. After the completion of the RFP response scoring, staff determined that Geo Group best suits the needs of the police department. Geo's price proposal is seven thousand dollars less than our current contract, and was less cost than the proposal from G4S. By using jail contract services, police officers are able to reduce the time it takes to process arrestees and return to the field. Prisoner processing time for officers has been reduced from two hours to fifteen minutes. In twenty fourteen, Geo's jail staff processed five thousand, six hundred and nineteen arrestees, generating manpower savings of approximately nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three hours, and the savings enabled police department to keep the equivalent of five additional police officers on the street. The financial impact to the city will be one million, five hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars over the life of the three-year contract. The cost of the contract is partially mitigated by booking fees collected by the department. In twenty fourteen, approximately ninety-seven thousand dollars was collected through this process. The cost of the jail contract was anticipated and is fully funded in the police department's current budget, so no additional funding is necessary. It is recommended that the City Council award a contract to Geo Group Incorporated in the amount not to exceed one million, five hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred and sixty-one, beginning fiscal year twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, and through fiscal year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, and authorize the interim city manager who is designated to sign the agreement and make any modifications as necessary on behalf of the city. And this concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I just want to see if I heard right. Nine thousand hours a year it saves, is that?
Yes.
Not significant. That's good.
Is there a motion?
Uh, I'll move it.
Second.
Any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion received, four yes votes.
Next item, please.
Next item is the Proposed Legislative Advocacy Program. Maria Stipe is here to present that report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. The purpose of this report is to provide a proposed legislative advocacy program for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen legislative session for City Council consideration and approval. At the City Council study session on March thirteenth, the City Council identified legislative advocacy and development of a legislative advocacy program as a priority for fiscal year two thousand fifteen, sixteen. This goal was then incorporated into the city's fiscal year two thousand fifteen, sixteen strategic plan that was adopted by the council in May. The city manager's office presently coordinates an active legislative advocacy program focused on protecting the interests of our community and identifying resources available to enhance city services and programs. Our legislative efforts include researching and monitoring federal and state bills, preparing letters and related communications in response to proposed legislation, and working with our legislative representatives and their staffs to promote the interests of our city. The City Council and city manager's office work closely with our elected representatives as well as with the League of California Cities and Association of California Cities Orange County to influence policy decisions that affect cities and to support local control and local funding. The two thousand fifteen, sixteen legislative platform, which was approved by the City Council in, earlier this year in March, provides a framework for the City of Garden Grove's legislative program. The primary objectives of the legislative platform is for the City Council to adopt official city positions on clearly stated legislative issues at the start of the legislative session. By doing this, the legislative approval process is streamlined by receiving clear direction at the beginning of the session from the City Council on pertinent legislative issues. For proposed legislation consistent with the platform, city staff is authorized to prepare position letters for the mayor's or the city manager's signature. Items that are not addressed in the legislative platform typically require further council direction, and those types of items are brought back before the council, for council consideration. And we've had a number of those items, as you may recall, oftentimes they'll be related to human, human rights issues or, or items at the federal level. The Proposed Legislative Advocacy Program presented for council consideration and approval summarizes key components of the city's current legislative advocacy program, incorporates the city's legislative platform, and identifies specific program goals and strategies. Upon approval by the City Council, the Legislative Advocacy Program will be posted on the city's website, along with ongoing information to keep the City Council, city staff, and the community informed regarding legislative actions and issues of importance to the city. It's recommended that the City Council consider and approve the attached legislative advocacy program for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen legislative session, and I'm now available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions? None? Is there a motion? Need approval?
Second it.
Please vote.
Motion received, four yes votes.
Thank you. Twenty-one A, please.
Twenty-one A is regarding the paramedic tax override rate, and Kingsley Okuriki is here to provide that report.
Thank you, Ms. Baylor. With this item, staff is asking that you adopt a paramedic tax override for the fiscal year two thousand fifteen, sixteen, and, and the proposed rate here is unchanged from last year. In June nineteen seventy-four, over sixty percent of Garden Grove voters approved the paramedic tax override to help fund the ongoing cost of, for, ongoing cost for emergency medical care services to the community. In order to continue and maintain the services, and to pay for the emergency, paramedic emergency medical care services, it is necessary to continue to generate revenue through the use of tax override on the taxable properties within the City of Garden Grove. Therefore, staff recommends that the City Council adopt the attached ordinance authorizing property tax override of seven cents per one hundred dollars of full, uh, full value, specifically for two thousand fifteen, sixteen fiscal year, for the paramedic program. Total revenue anticipated as a result is eight point six million dollars that will be used to maintain and pay for the emergency medical care services. And this being the, an introduction and first reading, I guess I have to read the title, Tom. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove, establishing the amount of money for paramedic services that must be raised by, and, uh, that must be raised by an ad valorem tax override, and the setting of the tax rate of said override. That concludes my report, and I can answer any questions that you have.
I have a question. So this, uh, this will create a revenue of about eight point six million dollars?
Yes.
And is this a part of the general fund that had been allocated for, you know, the fire?
Yeah, it is part of the general fund revenue, and, um, you know, on the slide that I showed you earlier, you know, the revenue slide, we account for that.
Okay. Yes, thank you.
What's the current cent per hundred dollars of assessed valuations right now?
It is the same, seven cents.
Seven cents, okay.
Uh, it is unchanged from the current fiscal year. Next year, it's not changing.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's no need to change that?
Uh, we changed it a couple of years. I think it was, um, six, uh, five cents per one hundred dollar of assessed value, and we increased it to seven cents. I think the council has authorization to raise it up to ten cents, but you have to justify the cost in order to collect up.
So that's what I'm asking, there's no?
I'm glad that I don't have to pay more for my, you know, for my coffee tax to go over for this. I'm sure the resident are happy to.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I move the motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion received, four yes votes.
Twenty-one F.
Twenty-one F is a contract with the Delinka Group for demographic services relating to voting patterns in the City of Garden Grove, and Maria Stipe is here to provide that report.
Thank you, Mrs. Baylor. Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, the purpose of this report is for the City Council to approve an agreement for professional demographic services relating to voting patterns in the City of Garden Grove. City Council member Chris Beard initiated discussions at the City Council level regarding a potential switch from at-large City Council elections to by-district elections. Following review at the City Council meeting on June ninth, City Council directed staff to bring back proposals for City Council consideration to hire a demographics firm to analyze voting patterns in the city to assess whether a switch to by-district elections may be appropriate. Staff requested proposals for professional demographic services from seven firms. Out of those seven, two firms, Delinka Group and National Demographics Corporation, submitted proposals. Given the short turnaround for requesting and receiving proposals, staff was not able to conduct an in-depth analysis of the two firms. However, based on the information contained in the two submittals, both firms are very highly qualified and similar in their approach and highly qualified and similar in their approach and cost for services. While both proposals are very strong, staff recommends the Delanca Group over the National Demographic Corporation based on their experience working for other public agencies that serve the city. The Delanca Group provided demographic analysis services to the Garden Grove Unified School District, the Anaheim Union School District, and the North Orange County Community College District. In addition to their direct knowledge of Garden Grove, they already have data in-house to quickly produce GIS maps and scenarios that would be related to this study. Staff also preferred Delanca Group's easy-to-understand detailed breakdown of services, deliverables, and costs. National Demographic Corporation, their service structure and deliverables were not as well-defined, and the separate pricing for additional services made it more difficult to know what the true costs for the contract would be. As a result, that supported staff's determination. The impact to the general fund for initial demographic and election analysis will be $17,200. The services would be funded with available funds in the current year budget. It's recommended that the City Council direct the interim city manager to enter into an agreement with Delanca Group for demographic services, and I'm now available to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for staff?
Yes, I do.
Wait one moment. Mr. Roder?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just two additional points on it. First, I wanted to recognize the exceptional job of Mrs. Stipe in doing a very quick turnaround on this proposal. This was requested by the council literally two weeks ago, and to go out, identify firms, issue an RFP, obtain proposals back, evaluate those, repair the report, and come up with a recommendation, that timeframe really is the kind of effort that I think deserves mention and merit to the council and the community. Second of all, I wanted the council and public to also understand that the proposals were independently evaluated by the city attorney, the deputy city manager, and myself. We each independently evaluated the proposals and then came with our own conclusions without discussion until we had finished that evaluation. So this is a consensus evaluation with both my office and city attorney's office.
Great, thank you. And yes, thank you, Ms. Stipe. We're going to expect nothing less. We really appreciate it. Any questions? Mr. Breed?
Yes. Can you elaborate? I understand the very short, you know, timeframe to move this, and so you would not be able to do an in-depth analysis of each of these vendor. But I glanced through them, and I see NDC is also have a long list of, you know, clients, including a lot of nearby cities such as San Benito, County says San Benito, San Diego, et cetera. And then the city include numerous like Glendale and, you know, Palmdale and a couple other. And I'm sure, so I think they probably are the, you know, among the top vendor. Do you see when you evaluate them, you mentioned that, you know, they'll create, you know, independently come to the Delanca. Can you share with us what's the difference, why you see like one as opposed to the other?
Would you like me to answer that, Mr. Roder?
Certainly. And I know the city attorney and I'd be happy to chime in as well.
We particularly liked the layout of the Delanca Group's, let me find it here in the attachment, but their detailed scope of work where they laid out their various activities and tasks and deliverables. And it was clear in the deliverables and exactly what we were getting along the way, and in particular, the preparation of a report that explains the methodology, data sources, and the results of the analysis performed. In the NDC proposal, it wasn't clear to us, at least to me, that we would actually have a written report that summarizes the analysis. We appear to receive spreadsheets and graphs and such, but it's not clear that there's an actual report that summarizes that, and we felt that that would be important for the community to understand. And it's possible that with some more research, the National Demographic Corporation could provide that, and it could be included, but it's not clear on the surface that that is one of the elements that would be provided. And again, I think we did take into consideration, you know, if there is a second phase in the overall cost, and when you add the cost of the first phase and the second phase, they're very, very close. It's just, again, with the NDC, it was a little bit less clear in terms of how many, what the cost would be, and I can direct your attention to one of the pages here that kind of offers some add-on pricing for various elements. Let me see where that is. On page nine, if you start with level one, and then if you need level two, you can add in these additional, at $550 per election, you can add in additional propositions that would be analyzed, and it's not clear how many of those would be required to support the need and such. So again, you know, as you look at the additional costs in the various levels, in-person presentations and meetings are additional charges, and it's not clear how many meetings we would require and such. So you could add those costs on and not know for certain. It's possible it could be more cost-effective, but it's not clear. And so for that reason, we like the other proposal. I like the other proposal.
I take it that we probably not have a chance to ask them to give us more, you know, example of their work so that we can compare.
Right, right. That would be fair.
Okay. No more question?
No more questions? Okay, are you ready to vote?
I would like to deliberate if we, do I have any comment from the public?
I'm sorry, there's no...
No public? Okay.
Comments on this? You know, I would like to say the cities that you listed off, Mr. Breed, were not cities that...
I haven't, I have a chance to, I just ask questions, so...
I know, I'm just, I'm just sharing with you. The cities that you listed off in the NDC group just so happen to not be Garden Grove, whereas the Delanca Group has worked in Garden Grove.
Right, and that's my problem. That is a...
Can I finish?
Sure.
And I think that is the most important consideration here for this particular study. Thank you.
And that's the very core concern that I have with the Delanca Group. Unlike your assessment, I find that the reason that I do not like the Delanca Group is because they have been performing this exact work for the Garden Grove School District. So they have done the exact type of work that we asked them to do for our city. I already knew generally what the outcome would be. So why would I want to spend, you know, $20,000 to get something that I already know the conclusion? Because I just know that for the Garden Grove School District, the same exact demographic that we have, you know, years or so ago, if that is my understanding.
Mr. Breed, actually, you know, I was on the school board during that time, and that's absolutely incorrect. The boundaries for the city and the boundaries for the school district are completely different. And what I can say is that, you know, I don't want to add into the deliberative evaluation of these two because I didn't really, you know, I'm not able to really compare based on what staff has already done. And staff, you know, three people did it independently. The data that they look at is going to be the data. That's not something that we can control. It may have changed slightly with the, you know, over the years with the population and the shifting and whatnot, but the data is the data, the law is the law. So you may not like the results of Garden Grove Unified, but this is, the data is going to be the same. It's the quality of the work, and I think when we think about quality, we would want to go with somebody that already has experience in our city because they would already be familiar, and they can help us engage the public in the way that we'd like them to. And I was very satisfied, you know, in the meetings. I know that, I've seen Councilman Chris Beard and his wife at meetings engaging the public and on the maps, et cetera. This is not even to consider moving to that level yet. This is the preliminary data, demographic analysis. Whether you like it or not, you can't change it.
Mayor, I think it's very amusing that you said that I do not like the Garden Grove School District study done by the, you know, that consulting firm. In fact, I have no preference at all. And I, the reason that I thought that the NDC would give us more perspective, because we already have the Polinka Group doing their analysis. If I pay, you know, another firm to do their analysis, data is data, and law is law. I understand that. And I probably even like the Polinka study or report. I didn't say that I like or I don't like, but what I would love to have is, since the Polinka Group had done that study very recently, I thought it would make a lot of sense to have another vendor coming in and do the study. And if both of them come out with the same, similar conclusion, then I find that would be very good for me to make the decision because it come from both vendors that reach the same, the same argument, the same conclusion. So that is why I look at it differently. I say, okay, since the Polinka had done that, there's no need to pay them to do something. And I, of course, understand the Garden Grove School District include a little bit of Westminster. So the boundary is a little bit different, but it's still the majority of the Garden Grove School District, you know, encompass, you know, Garden Grove, the majority of our city. So I think it would make a lot of sense to bring in NDC to give us a second perspective. We often talk about, you know, when you go to see a doctor, you want to have a second opinion. Now, this is one of the most important decisions that we made, you know, for our city. So I think if we have input from two different vendor coming in, and if they are coming out with the same conclusion, then it would make our decision a lot easier. That's all I say. So for that, I would try to, you know, ask the council and the mayor to consider that, you know, that from that angle and see if we make sense to bring in NDC instead of Polinka.
Okay, are you ready to vote? Is there a motion? Who approve it?
I would like to put a substitute motion.
What's your substitute motion?
I would like to put a substitute motion to substitute NDC instead of Polinka. I wish to have a second for that.
Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, please vote.
Motion received, one yes vote with Councilmember Beard, Mayor Wynn, and Councilmember Font voting no.
Thank you. And let's vote on the first motion by Councilmember Beard as received a second. Is that correct?
I haven't gotten a second.
Second. Please vote.
Motion received, four yes votes.
Thank you. Okay. Democracy, and it is 10:45 almost. We're at 22A.
22A is the second reading of ordinance number 2857 by title only entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove: Approving Amendment Number A-013-2015, A Zoning Text Amendment to Portions of Chapter 18 Mixed-Use Regulations and Chapter 4 Definitions of Title 9 of the Garden Grove Municipal Code to Establish New Primitive Uses in the Civic Center Mixed-Use 1 CC1 Zone, New Development, Operational and Compatibility Standards for Certain Uses in the CC1 Zone, and Standards for the Conversion of Single-Family Homes in the CC1 Zone."
Okay. Is there a staff report?
No, it's just a second reading.
No, oh, a second reading, okay. Is there a motion? Who approve it?
Second.
Please vote.
Motion received, four yes votes. Oh, it's okay, I can see.
Did we need to read any of that, city attorney?
Big part.
For 22A1? The title only?
A1, we got the title, we're fine, simple work.
Okay, thanks. And coming to your end, we have 23A, and that is for me. It is a proclamation proclaiming June 2015 as Immigrant Heritage Month. And there's a supplement here for the council members. Let me just read it real quick. "Whereas generations of immigrants," excuse me, "from every corner of the globe have built our country's economy and created the unique character of our nation, whereas immigrants continue to grow businesses, innovate, strengthen our economy, and create American jobs in Garden Grove, California. Whereas immigrants have provided the United States with a unique social and cultural influence, fundamentally enriching the extraordinary character of our nation. Whereas immigrants have been tireless leaders, not only in securing their rights and access to equal opportunity, but also campaigned to create a fairer and more just society for all Americans. And whereas despite these countless contributions, the world of immigrants in building and enriching our nation has frequently been overlooked and undervalued throughout our history and continuing to the present day. Now therefore be it resolved that the Garden Grove City Council assembled that June 2015 is designated as Immigrant Heritage Month." I'd like to move that. I'll second that. Please vote.
Motion received, four yes votes.
Any other matters from council? I'll start with our city manager, Mr. Roder.
Nothing more this evening.
Good.
I just want to wish everyone a happy 4th of July. I don't think we have a meeting before then, so have a safe and sane 4th of July, and remember illegal fireworks are just illegal, $1,000 fine. And we're going to be out in enforcement, I assume, right? To an answer?
Good.
You know, and what is the number to, the number is online on our website to call to report folks that have illegal fireworks. And don't worry about, you know, reporting, that's a good thing you're doing, you're doing a good thing for yourself and also for your neighbors when you do that. You know, don't worry about ratting someone out for having illegal fireworks. You're helping our city when you're doing that.
Just one thing, I want to commend staff for putting the budget together. I know it was a long, arduous process and still kind of going on, but we're going to look into modernizing some systems related to it, but the work and the effort and involvement of all the staff is well appreciated. I think we're well informed. I want to thank you for that.
Just agree.
Okay, July 5th, the Dalai Lama will be here with us at the, is that at the Hyatt Hotel? And I really look forward to meet him, but unfortunately, I will be out town, so I really regret that. I miss that boat. So, you know, hope everyone have a good time with him and be blessed.
Thank you. I wish everyone a very happy 4th of July, stay safe, and I wish my wife Cindy a belated happy birthday. Oh, wonderful, happy birthday, Mrs. Van. And I would like to echo my colleagues' comments in thanking our staff for working on the budget and also for staying here with us, and also the public for coming to the workshops and being here. There's so many of you out there. There wasn't. Okay, we're going to a train night meeting on a very serious note. We had a tragedy, I think it's pretty much a national tragedy, and over the weekend we had our state and city flags lowered. So we're going to a train night meeting in the names of the victims in Charleston, South Carolina at Mother Emanuel. Carolina at Mother Emanuel African Methodist Episcopal Church. Cynthia Hurd, 54, Reverend Clementa Pickney, 41, Reverend Shalanda Coleman Singleton, 45, Tawanza Sanders, 26, Ethel Lance, 70, Reverend Depean Middleton Doctor, 49, Suzie Jackson, 87, Reverend Daniel Simmons Senior, 74, and Lyra Thompson, 59.